My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Lindsey, we're okay? Okay. Sorry for the slight delay. Open session, closed session? We did not meet in closed session, so therefore we'll turn to an opportunity for you to address us on items that are not on this agenda if you wish. We may not be able to take any action, but certainly pleased to hear from you. And we'll start with Kelly London. Kelly?
Hi.
I have two cars, and we'll open to the general.
Sure. Do you need a second?
Oh.
Uh, wildfire.
Yes, do you prefer to wait?
I would.
Okay, sure. No, that's fine. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for mentioning. Yeah. Good evening. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm assuming the same applies to Chris. Is that correct? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we got it right. Next then will be Miguel Rodriguez. Simon? Good evening.
Good evening. Good.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is one other person. Sure, whatever. Thank you.
Good evening. And, uh, it's, uh, what? February 4th?
Renter protection ordinances would be on the books is April. In light of this, we strongly urge you and your leadership to consider a temporary moratorium on evictions and rent increases. These are to be active only for the time it takes for these ordinances to go into effect. Other cities have done this, including Oakland in 2016, Los Angeles and Santa Cruz last year. Mountain View recently responded to an emergency that would displace 75 low-income residents by passing a moratorium on demolition or remodeling of housing. In all these places, there were a handful of bad landlords who saw renter protections being considered, and they rushed to evict tenants in anticipation of them. So provisions of moratoriums in other cities were retroactive to protect those tenants who had already been evicted without cause or faced a large preemptive rent increase. We'd like to protect our neighbors in the same way. A retroactive moratorium will just buy time so that all renters will have the protection of the laws that we're waiting for. We understand, if I could be given just a little bit of leeway, we understand that the ordinances take time to craft. Fortunately, moratoriums are simpler, so we're urging you to use the fastest possible legal timeline. We urge you to consider a moratorium on no-fault evictions and rent increases above 5% retroactive to the beginning of 2019. Those are the facts, but this is the heart of the matter. I wanted to remind us, this could be happening to anyone's mother, father, sister, or grandmother. It's happening to young white professionals who've just moved here or longtime senior citizens. So in essence, it's happening to all of us, but these families are suffering the most for it. Let's stand together in solidarity with these families. Thank you so much for your time.
And thanks for presenting your point. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now, were there two others that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I'm Simon. Simon Vincentian. I just moved here in October, so I'm not like, I'm not a long-term resident of San Rafael, but I really like it here. We moved here from Alaska. It's a lot nicer and warmer here. So I'd like to stay, but the rent situation here is pretty awful. It's, yeah, so I work in town. My wife works in Mill Valley. We have like, we're straight middle-class income, and we have a hard time making ends meet. Our rent's stressed and like currently aren't saving, so that means like buying a house is kind of off, you know, not an option for us. We know a couple last week who just moved. They moved to Denver where they can afford to live and plan their future together. So this is not just like an issue that's happening for immigrants. It's not just an issue that's happening for poor people. It's definitely people like across the strata in San Rafael. It's something that makes us consider our future here and it making us, you know, like think about whether we want to live here or not. And yeah, that's it.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Simon. Good evening.
Uh, I wanted to ask if we could have two moments.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic because we're taped?
Señores, señores del Consilio, muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ingrid Ordonez. En esta oportunidad quiero comentarles que yo ya enfrenté un desalojo, pero antes de todo quisiera pedirle de favor que separaran a las personas que nos acompañan esta noche, que también están pasando por un proceso difícil. Pasamos por un proceso difícil y muy penoso puesto que nos encontramos en un, nosotros nos encontramos sin un hogar fijo para la estabilidad de mis niños. Cuando enfrenté el desalojo, dormimos y comimos en el suelo, sin poder encontrar la ayuda necesaria. Todo esto está en la memoria de mis hijos, que ellos tuvieron que recibir terapia para poder salir adelante en las escuelas. En las escuelas me apoyaron con los niños. Ahora no quiero pasar por la misma situación. Fue muy duro para mí y mi familia salir de la situación. Ahora enfrento lo mismo nuevamente. Por esta razón estoy enfrente aquí de ustedes para pedir una moratoria, para que nos puedan ayudar a tener una diferente situación de vida y tranquilidad. Pues soy trabajadora doméstica, que tan solo ayudo a limpiar casas y no tengo un sueldo alto. Y para obtener otro hogar tengo que contar con un mínimo de siete mil dólares, dinero que no tengo. Dinero que no tengo. Y con esta moratoria nos da la oportunidad de estar protegidos a corto plazo mientras llega la mediación obligatoria y la causa justa, la cual nos permitiría negociar con el dueño del edificio para una mejor estabilidad y el apoyo de relocación que nos permitiría mudarnos a otro lado sin tener que pasar un tiempo sin hogar. Gracias.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Ingrid Ordonez. About 10 years ago, I was evicted. I had nowhere to sleep with my two children of three and five years old. We had to sleep on the ground, eat sitting on the ground. When we finally found a place, my children were so traumatized, they could not function. They had to receive therapy in the school. Now we are facing an eviction. I am a domestic worker. I clean houses in Marin. My salary is low. To find a new apartment costs $7,000. We're asking for an emergency moratorium to protect us while we work on a, uh, while, to protect us while you work on a passing, on passing the other ordinance.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. We appreciate it. I'll just make a very brief comment. We are, we are not allowed to take action on items that are not on this evening's agenda because they have to be announced and so individuals can present their viewpoints as we deliberate and draw conclusions. Absent the agenda, we're not able to do that, and we're not able to take any action regarding this other matter. Having said that, we have had an opportunity to become somewhat involved in this issue on a previous occasion and to a more satisfactory, perhaps not completely, but more satisfactory outcome. And I'm tempted to ask the city attorney if it would be appropriate, which I would encourage, to meet sometime this week. My preference would be Friday to better understand the issue and to see what might be appropriate, but I'll turn to the city attorney for that.
Mr. Mayor, could you clarify? Did you wish to meet with me or wish to meet with the folks who are present?
No. I'm thinking of Mr. Rodriguez and perhaps several others.
Well, I think certainly if you wish to schedule a get-together, that would be an appropriate thing to offer at this time. If you have time on your calendar, you could let them know when that's available.
And I appreciate that. I guess I would like you to expand some on the timeliness. It concerns me that it may be difficult if we wish to take some action which couldn't become before the city council with.
Well, the request that's been made is for a moratorium.
Correct.
If that's something that the council was interested in investigating, we would, we would need to, and we can do some quick legal research on that. And then the council could always schedule a special meeting, an emergency meeting sometime between now and our next meeting, which is the first Monday in February, February 4th, I believe. And we, you know, our office would be glad to turn to that immediately and prepare for such a meeting. So I can work with the city manager on that if that's the direction.
Appreciate that. And I'll ask the council members, and I would ask Councilmember Colin if it's appropriate and you're involved, if that's something that you would be willing to participate in with myself. And I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but time is of the essence, and so it strikes me that we ought to move on this. So if you're willing and the council member is acceptable to the research suggested by the city attorney, we'll do that. Again, we can't take further action this evening. I hope you understand. Anyone else wish to address us this evening? Seeing none, we'll close. Move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a few brief update items. The first one is that the U.S. Census 2020 is approaching, and that means a lot of things. One thing that it means is that we may be required to look at the districts that we put in place for the 2022 election, if there are any changes to the four districts that we have. But another very important thing is just preparing and getting ready for the 2020 census. And there's some advanced work going on through a complete count committee, which is a group of community leaders who coordinate community engagement and outreach strategies to encourage people in Marin County to participate in the census. And focusing primarily on everyone, but with a specific focus on hard-to-count populations. So Mayor Phillips and Councilmember Colin joining Supervisor Rodoni and other stakeholders on this particular committee. I just wanted to let the community know that next steps is that Board of Supervisors would be considering early in February, February 5th is what is, was projected, to accept a grant from the California Census Office to kick off this process. And the city staff here in San Rafael is playing a role, and I also just, you know, want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Colin as well for the role that you're playing on it because it's something that we're, we feel is really important leading up to the 2020 census. Also, there is a volunteer, another important opportunity to volunteer in the 2019 Point-in-Time Count, which is coming up a week from yesterday, so Monday, January 28th. And the Point-in-Time Count counts the number of people currently experiencing homelessness throughout Marin County. To get this done, it's, it's some staff, but it's all volunteers primarily. It's some staff, but volunteering their time, and then people from the community volunteering their time to complete the count, which is important because it helps ensure that Marin County receives adequate funding and also whether or not we're making progress towards goals. So the Point-in-Time Count's coming up on Monday, 28th. If anyone's interested, I know that they're always looking for more volunteers. The news feed of the City of San Rafael's front homepage, so citiesanrafel.org under the news feed has more information there. And then lastly, because we are focusing on wildfire prevention, and we'll spend a lot of time on wildfire prevention this evening, I just wanted to make sure that people knew about the next opportunity for a get-ready class, which is the one-hour things that you can be doing to get yourself ready for a disaster. So Saturday, February 2nd. And more information there is found on our homepage under the Events tab. It's things you can do at your own house and with your family to be more prepared for an emergency. So it'll be at the Terre Laine Community Center on February 2nd at 10:00 a.m. for a little over an hour. And you can, they're looking for registration beforehand just so they know how many people are coming. Those are the updates I have. Thank you.
I'd appreciate it. And just one thing with regard to the Point-in-Time Count. Heads up, it's 5:00 a.m. Monday morning.
Should've said that.
So it's, I'll be there. I don't know how effective, but it'll be 5:00 a.m. And I do think that they're looking for some additional volunteers. It's an interesting experience, let's say, if anyone's interested. Thanks for your report, Jim. Move on to the consent calendars. Item 4A through quite a few this evening. 4J, unless someone wishes to have an item held. It'll be covered in a single motion. Start with the public. Anyone wish to address us on the consent items? Seeing none, we'll return for a motion with regard to consent items.
I move the consent calendar?
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Colin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I'm Attorney's 40, and we'll now go on to special presentation, Major Crime Task Force update.
She's first.
Paul, you're gonna lose this one.
I'm not Paul Jensen. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Rudy Yamanoa from the Marin County Sheriff's Office, who is the commander of the Marin County Major Crimes Task Force to give council and our community update on all the really wonderful things and helpful things they've been doing in our community.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Evening.
And thank you, Chief, for allowing me to be here and speak on behalf of the task force. And thank you for your support and contribution to the task force for our efforts to continue to apprehend and, you know, locate and prosecute these drug offenders that affect the county of Marin. So I've been in the task force for two years now, and I just want to kind of give you a snapshot or a brief summary of what's been happening since I've been in the unit. 2000, let me start with 2017. 2017, we had about 132 agency contacts with our officers in San Rafael. We also had 128 cases, 17 arrests, 78 search warrants, and some of those cases that we have below is 58 cases, which was from interdiction to out-of-state for marijuana cases. And also, we had a canal program that was generated in 2017. So the highlight cases I want to talk about, the first case happened in 2017. This is a case where we had an informant that was funded by the DEA. There was a big drug ring that was happening in the San Rafael area, and we had an informant that was able to infiltrate this drug ring. And through the process, we were able to purchase about four pounds of cocaine in the canal area. And with this, we spent about $28,000 purchasing these drugs. The DEA was supportive in that case, and we did a really good job on culminating, you know, the amount of drugs that we located, having our informant purchase the amount of drugs into the, that, you know, led from LA here to Marin County. So it was a very good case that we put together. In September, there was a buy program that we put together. In this buy program, we had an undercover officer that was able to infiltrate also the drug ring that was happening in the canal area. And in this case, we were able to get about 4.4 pounds during the search warrant of cocaine and just a number of drugs that was recovered and funding that we found in all these search warrants. And with these cases, this is what we found. You guys see guns, kilos of cocaine, thousand dollars of cash, and methamphetamine, or ICE as they call it. And these were all located during the big cases that we investigated in 2017. What was more interesting in 2017 is the amount of seizures that we were able to get through these cases. We had 11 cases in 2017. And in those cases, from either search warrants or through interdiction, through the FedEx shipping or through traffic stops, we were able to confiscate $169,000 in acid seizure in 2017. As we move into 2018, we had 182 cases, excuse me, 182 agency contacts, 116 cases, 18 arrests, and 19 search warrants. And with those cases, the highlight cases that we did, we had an undercover officer that was able to get into the Trevor's Bar, purchase a number of narcotics from that bar, and were able to make arrests and search warrants from the case. Currently, that case is sitting with ABC on what violation are they gonna go ahead with for Trevor's Bar. We also had a large trafficking case that happened in 2018. Once again, our undercover officer was able to infiltrate another drug ring in the San Rafael Canal area, and he was able to purchase numerous buys of cocaine and methamphetamine from this group. And with that, we were able to do a number of search warrants. We actually had DEA involved with that case, which they were federally indicted for those cases, and we were able to seize about $17,000 from that case. So it was also a good case, and this is kind of what we located in some of these cases, the Trevor Bar, some of the search warrants that we've been doing, and then also some traffic stops that we've been working. But aside from the drug cases that we work, the one thing that the task force do, we also assist in is other big cases. There's cases that San Rafael would call for homicide cases, or any big cases that they have. Task force is always there to help with search warrants, surveillances, gathering information, providing information, and that's what the task force does. We're not just a drug enforcement unit. We also help on these big cases, like this homicide that just happened in December of this past year. We're able to supply a number of personnel who are experts in surveillances, expert in search warrants, expert in really gathering information, and it was a really big help to assist San Rafael in those cases. But as we go through the cases, and you know, the two years I've been there, it's just been an uprising of drugs that's just occurring all throughout the county. It, it, there's nowhere that's safe throughout this county of Marin. And we are trying everything we can in the unit to really attack the drug, uh, drug problem that's going on there, whether it be sales, whether it be possessions, the young generation that's, you know, getting to the drugs right now, and we're really trying to go after it. And we're using every effort we can, and with the help with San Rafael, with their officers on the street, that's, you know, they have the, you know, their ears to the streets. So we're getting firsthand information from the officers on the street, what's happening, who are the players, who's bringing the drugs into the, to the canal, who's distributing out of the canal to the rest of the county of Marin? And the big help comes from their officers, and I really thank San Rafael with their constant effort in helping in the task force. But the big issue that I see right now, and we've all heard about what's happening with fentanyl, and fentanyl has really been an epidemic. It's really been hitting, you know, nationwide, the overdose death, the, you know, everyone's just tapping into fentanyl, and you know, what is fentanyl? And the question out there, what is fentanyl? What is it doing? How's it getting into our cities, our schools, our kids, the younger generation, the older generation? But it's everywhere. And before I hand it off to Nick Scott, he's gonna talk about fentanyl. But I just want to say that we, as a task force, really appreciate the support from San Rafael and the continued support because without your help, you know, we wouldn't be able to function as a unit, what we do right now. With the funding that's distributed to the task force, we are constantly, constantly battling the war on drugs. So I just want to say thank you very much for all the help that you guys have provided to the task force. And with this, I would like to introduce Nick Scott, and he'll talk about fentanyl.
Thanks for your presentation. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chief, thank you for having me here. Council, thank you. My name's Nick Scott. I'm a detective with the Major Crimes Task Force here in Marin. I'm actually the liaison to San Rafael PD. So I'm gonna quickly just talk about fentanyl. So a lot of people don't know this, but Marin County, out of the nine major Bay Area counties, has the second-largest opioid death overdose rate, second only to San Francisco. So there is an opioid epidemic going on, and fentanyl is a lot stronger than heroin. It's about 50 times more stronger than heroin, about 100 times stronger than morphine. And we're seeing more and more people actively seeking out fentanyl. It's definitely coming, and it's definitely here, and we're doing our best to get ahead of it. They're also synthesizing it, putting it in pills like Xanax, Counterfeit, OxyContin. That's how we're typically seeing it. It's pretty expensive as far as street drugs go, prices. You see about 0.2 grams of fentanyl costs about $100, where a gram of cocaine or heroin is roughly $100 for one gram, and methamphetamine is a lot cheaper than that. But it's still being actively sought out there. There's a stronger high that users get from it. They don't need to use quite as much, but with a lot of narcotics, you don't really know what you're getting all the time. So that's why we're seeing a lot of overdoses associated with it. So you can see there, it's kind of small, but that is about the amount of fentanyl that it takes for a person to overdose on. It doesn't take much. So we've been going through and doing roll call trainings with San Rafael Police Department during their briefings and giving them training on precautions to take when encountering this in the streets. It's very easily, you can very easily be exposed to it, whether you breathe it in, get it on your skin, something like that. So that's a big thing that we've done in all the agencies in the county. We were going around and giving them training on how to handle fentanyl, how to deal with it. All the officers in the county are given naloxone, which is the, it counters the opioid. So it's out there in the police cars, and it's also in fire trucks, and it's being used to bring a lot of people back. So this is some handling instructions, which you probably will never have to use, hopefully, but these are the kind of things that we're teaching the officers out there on how to deal with the epidemic. As you saw what happened in Chico, you know, officers going in, someone down, another 14 people down, a couple officers went down. So it's here, and it's kind of a scary thing. Funny thing is, is it takes more Narcan for an officer who doesn't have that acclimation to the narcotic. So as much Narcan as we can get the officers, the better. And then at the Major Crime Task Force, we use this, we have a DEA agent that lets us use this, it's called a True Narc, and it helps us to test drugs without using a NIC test, which are, you know, you've seen them on TV where they pop things and it turns blue and says it's a narcotic. Well, instead of opening the packaging and being exposed to the narcotic, we have access to this, and all of our agencies, including San Rafael, know that we have access to it. So if they have any questions about what a narcotic is, they can call us out there. We can test it safely using this machine. Are there any questions? No? Thank you, guys.
This is a little bit, a little bit, I haven't thought this through, but I'm curious. And I don't know the first thing about fentanyl, I'll admit that going in, but it does strike me that it's deadly, obviously.
Yes.
Also in small quantities, apparently.
Very small.
So I'm wondering if the community, the community that perhaps is most susceptible is in some way, through you or us or someone, informing those that might be subjecting themselves to the possibility of killing themselves.
So most of the users that I've spoken with, they're actively seeking it. So I mean, unless you're actively seeking it, it's a very expensive thing to buy, but it can, you can get exposed at any time. I mean, it doesn't take very much. You know, it gets on someone's clothing that's been around it, and then, you know, they brush off their clothing and then.
No, I'm talking about those that intentionally use fentanyl.
Intentionally?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's really weird to say this, but they, they're seeking out the strongest stuff that they can find. And if they hear that a dealer is selling stuff and people are overdosing on it, that's what the users are typically looking for. They want the strongest that they can get. Their addiction is so great that they're gonna want the strongest potency they can get. Now, you know, it's not regulated in any means, so like I said.
I understand that. I guess I'm referring to some within our community, various reasons, not excusable, but various reasons, let's say, are killing themselves. And if it were auto accidents or other possibilities, let's say, then we would do something about that. And I'm wondering if we're doing anything with regard to the portion of the community that's taking drugs, subjecting themselves to the probability of death. If we're the second highest, that's pretty disgusting.
Yeah.
For whatever reason.
Well, we're actively seeking that.
I'm not passing judgment, I'm just saying maybe there should be an element of that.
We're actively seeking out any dealers. We have informants on the streets. We work those cases tirelessly. Those are pretty much our priority cases right now. A lot of times, we're seeing people who get it from San Francisco or Oakland or Richmond, but it, there are some local county dealers here that we have active cases on, which can't talk too much about, but we are definitely working those cases tirelessly.
Okay. I'm curious, you've shown evidence of your seizures and some successes in that regard. I'm curious, you've shown evidence of your seizures and some successes in that regard. Of the total drugs within the community, I don't know if you can answer this, but total drugs within the community, how much has been seized by the task force? What percentage?
We've had some pretty good seizures.
Yeah, I mean, you asked, are you asking a total amount? I'm just trying to get a sense of if there's, if you seized, whatever it was, fourteen ounces or pounds, I forget, how much is that of the total?
I don't know those numbers exactly. I couldn't give you that exact number. I could try to get back to you with that, but I know our seizures are definitely the highest in the county, I would say. I'd feel comfortable saying that. But, you know, officers on the street are typically getting smaller quantities, and we're working off those cases and building from those cases. So we usually, you know, try to work our way up the ladder to get to the bigger seizures.
With regard to the Major Crime Task Force, there are two aspects. One is the actual performance and the results thereof, and the second would be a deterrent. In other words, if people are out there, know you're out prowling and successful in serving your purpose, I'm wondering how much of a deterrent the Major Crime Task Force is?
Talking to informants, they all know we're out there. They know, they don't know when we're out there, which is, you know...
Sure.
So a lot of them are usually surprised when they do get caught by us, and word of mouth is out there that we are out there. I think it's a pretty good deterrent for all the guys that I've talked to that work as informants, say, you know, I never thought you guys would get me, and that kind of thing. So I definitely see a positive outcome when we get involved in the cases. They know we're out there, but they just don't know when, hopefully.
So let me overgeneralize, but I'm curious, why Marin would, in terms of deaths we made reference to, second highest behind San Francisco, why would Marin's death rate be higher than Alameda?
It's by population, populace.
No, I understand that, but still...
But, I mean, there's a large prescription pill problem as well. I mean, it's not only fentanyl. You have OxyContin's, you have Vicodins, those kinds of drugs, and those are all in the opioid class. So, you know, I can't tell you exactly why people are taking them. It's an epidemic across the country, and, you know, we do our best to try to get ahead of it, and, you know, we're actively seeking these people selling narcotics, especially opioids, fentanyl. I mean, they're all, they're all pretty dangerous, but I can't give you an exact reason why people are taking opioids. I mean, usually it starts off with, you know, they get in an accident, they get hurt, and they get prescribed something, and then they take that for a long period of time, they start to abuse it, and they move on to heroin.
Right.
Because it's cheaper than buying prescription pills on the street. And then, you know, after the heroin for a while, and they move on to the fentanyl.
But that cycle's universal. I mean, if you're in Alameda, you have the same cycle, right? It's not unique to Marin County. I was just curious. Well, I remember going through the exercise of whether or not we should be part of the Marin Task Force, Major Crime Task Force, both when we decided not to, so that dates me a little bit, but more recently, when we decided to reinstate, and I'm pleased that we have, because there was sort of a tide moving away from major crimes, and I think that there is a countywide effort is advantageous, obviously based on the recommendation of the chief. But just personally, I think that we're fortunate as a county to have, I'll say, you guys involved in helping countywide issues that we have.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to serve you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Any more, Chief? Any comments that you have? Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Long evening anyway, so we'll move on to the public hearing. Tefra, now Paul.
It's my turn.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and council members. I'm gonna be very brief, because this is an item that was before you several months ago. In last November, the council held a public hearing and approved the issuance of a revenue note for the Casa Vista Apartments, which is at 55 Fairfax Street. This is a 100% affordable housing project that is actually managed by Bridge Housing Corporation. At that time, the ownership of the property was under the entity of Alto Station, Inc. We were informed a month later that the property ownership entity name changed, and so we have to conduct another hearing tonight. This is a hearing, by the way, that's required under the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibilities Act, TEFRA, which is a term I had not heard prior to, like, three or four months ago. So we're asking you to adopt a resolution, actually to repeat what you did in November. There aren't any changes in the conditions or terms. Actually, the refinancing that is affiliated with this note will be used to settle the outstanding debt and also apply to capital improvements to the property. So we're supporting that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone from the public on this item? Seeing none, return for a motion to accept the report.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
The resolution.
Second?
Move to the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries four zero. Thank you, Paul. Moving on to other agenda items, seven A, professional services agreement. And there's several, I don't know how you're gonna cover these, but they're somewhat similar. So you're...
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. Good evening, council members. We are here for a milestone in the general plan update process. As you may recall, we began this journey in February of 2017, where we initiated the general plan update. First six or seven months were a lot of housekeeping to hire the project manager, which we hired, Barry Miller, establish and recruit for a steering committee, and develop a work program. The steering committee was appointed in December of 2017, and they've been meeting monthly since January of 2018. In March of last year, we came to you with the more detailed work program and the budget for the general plan 2040 update. So this evening's matter was contemplated at that time. That was approved. Later in May, we received, or we were offered to apply for a grant, the OBAG grant, to do a downtown precise plan. We saw that, although it's gonna be a lot of extra work here while we're doing a general plan update, we saw it as a great opportunity to develop a more fine-tuned planning tool for the downtown area in conjunction with the general plan update, and that also allowed us to capitalize and leverage a lot of economies of scale with using the same EIR and getting a deeper dive into the general plan. So we applied for that, and were awarded that. Which then brings us to why we're here this evening, which is the technical consultants. So that's kind of the main milestone to kind of kick off a lot of the heavy lifting of the general plan update. We are looking to bring on the consultants to do a lot of the technical work, both for the EIR, infrastructure, economics, community design, and the downtown precise plan as well. So with that, we issued a pretty comprehensive request for proposals for competitive bid in August of 2018. We sent those to sixty-four firms. In September, the deadline came to receive those, and we actually received twenty-two different proposals. We took the next couple of months and did an in-house committee review. Three different committees were formed to review the proposals and kind of screen them down to the top three. The committees were made up of staff from different departments, as well as a steering committee member on each committee. We interviewed eleven firms at the end of October and early November, and at the end, we've selected the four firms. So as you'll see, there was more than four topic areas, and the reason why we selected four firms is that we consolidated a couple of them, given the similar type of work. So the Sequoia EIR was consolidated with the infrastructure, because we received no proposals on the infrastructure component. We asked the EIR consultant if they could take that on. The downtown precise plan was combined with the community design element of the general plan, and then economics and transportation. So where that brings us is, these are the four firms that we've selected. For the Sequoia infrastructure, it's Placeworks. The first column with the amounts, you'll see what was budgeted in the work program. The next column, you'll see what the contract proposal that we received. And then the last column will show you what we're requesting in the professional service agreements that are before you this evening. Those include a five percent contingency that we're asking to include in the proposal in case there's little changes, and that would be subject to city manager approval. So the total comes out to, for the four, 1.458 million. Now, you ask, how are we gonna pay for this? So first off, the OBAG grant will cover $500,000 of that. That money will not come in in one lump sum, but it's a reimbursable type of funding that once we reach certain milestones with the precise plan, we'll get reimbursement up to the $500,000. The next part is gonna be covered through a special fund we have, the general plan special revenue fund. This was a fund that was set up back in the mid-2000s as a, in a sense, almost a forced savings plan to help pay for such a large endeavor as a general plan update, where you save over the twenty years, and then you have the money there without affecting the general fund. So the current fund balance of that fund is 1.973 million dollars. So this would be paid from that. That fund will also covers the already initiated contract with the project manager. It'll cover other engagement and graphics needs for the general plan update, general plan implementation and special studies, and then other general plan-related expenses. So these funds would be allocated over two, next two fiscal years, and there is an option to extend that if necessary, although we are still on striving to have general plan before you for adoption in summer of 2020. And as I noted before, the contingency that we've proposed in the professional service agreement, we've set it up that it would require city manager approval. So what's before you are four resolutions for the four different agreements, Placeworks, Opticos, BAE, and Farr &amp; Peers. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And thanks, thanks for your report. We're fortunate to have Councilmember Mary Beth Bushy as our representative, so I'll start with you. Any questions?
I do have a question. I'm gonna dive way deeply down into the weeds of the minutia of this.
You guys are in trouble now.
And it may not even be in these professional agreements, but when we met in, earlier this month, we had been talking about different ways that we could get the steering committee and maybe others involved a little bit more in bringing their voice forward, and one of the ideas that we had was to invest in what we were calling clickers, instant voter devices. And I'm wondering if your overall budget includes that expenditure?
Yes, that is... Yes, that is contemplated. We've actually gotten the proposal for the clickers and are pursuing that. It's a very minute amount compared to the numbers we're talking about here.
But it...
But it's underway.
These will be important devices for making sure that the steering committee, all of which have very interesting and a wide range of perspectives on things that everyone's voice is heard, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, Kate. Karen, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Beth, for serving on that. Appreciate it. And there was a lot of work. These were, this is a really dense report, so thank you for putting all that together. Just a quick, couple quick questions. I was curious about Neighborland. Is that working? Because I had went on, maybe Barry can answer that, because I'd gone on and started to do it, and it was a lot of work, so I have to say, I kind of lost interest. I hopefully other people didn't have that same reaction, so I'm just curious if that's an effective tool. Because I know that was listed as one of the strategies for engaging people, and I'm just, I know it's new to San Rafael.
Barry Miller, project manager. I would say that Neighborland is working, but we need to keep pushing it. We have about 300 subscribers right now. Our goal is to really kind of get up into the thousands and make it something that everybody knows about. Other cities do things like put ads on buses, advertising it with the, you know, we can look into those bigger picture advertising opportunities, but we're really trying to drive traffic to the site right now, and we need, a lot of it is on us to keep refreshing it and put new content up.
Does it get easier than when more people start to interact on it? Because I think I was one of the first ones, and there wasn't enough to react to, so maybe it feeds upon itself in a way, or builds on itself is probably a better way to say it.
That's a good way of describing it, and that is exactly how it works. It's basically like a snowball, and as traffic goes to the site, it kind of grows. We're trying to use Nextdoor to draw people to the site right now. That's a pretty effective way of bringing people in. We just did a poll in December and had about 125 people respond to it, so there's definitely a buzz around it, but we can, we can keep building it.
Great. And then maybe, I don't know if it'll be you or Raphael, answer this next question. In all of these contracts, they talk about community outreach, engagement, they use the same terms, and it's in every single contract. So of course I start to think, and focus groups and community meetings, and I'm thinking, how are we gonna have, I mean, there are like twenty-five community meetings, or probably they're gonna be a coordinated effort. So how's that gonna be managed? Because we have a population here, it's a finite population of people that are gonna spend their time giving us their input, so I'm really curious how that's gonna be managed.
Yeah, I would say the community meetings and the input would really focus on two different things. So there's the general plan itself and the downtown precise plan. Although they are somewhat related, they will be different. So the downtown precise plan, for example, has a series of charrettes, multi-day charrettes that will be done. That'll be its own thing. The general plan ones will all be coordinated through us with Barry to try to be very strategic, you know, and focused on what we're trying to achieve, and that's why we have all these contracts as subcontracts to the project manager, so that we do have that sort of control.
Yeah, I think the challenge would be to go beyond people that are already keen to participate, and so hopefully the other people on the steering committee will reach out to their own groups that they're associated with and bring in people who might not normally participate.
And we're looking to do all sorts of different kinds of engagement. Our next round will be kind of the pop-ups, where we're gonna try to go out to the community, out in the canal to, on a weekend, and try to sit down somewhere and just get people to come by. So we're gonna try different strategies like that as well.
Yeah, no pop-up, I was happy to see that. And then my last question was, the downtown plan, precise plan, I'm sure everyone who reads that wonders, what are the boundaries of the downtown plan? That wasn't in the report.
TBD.
Oh, TBD, okay. That's why it wasn't in the report.
So generally, it will cover the downtown. The question will be, how far east, how far south do we go? The steering committee provided some input early on in that, and we're gonna, that's gonna actually be task number one for the downtown precise plan, is to kind of define that boundary, because all the, all the subsequent work will be based on that boundary.
And will that come to the council? Will we be aware of that, or would that just be done through the general plan process? Or maybe it's just through, informally, from the city manager?
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely keep you updated.
Having us know where that boundary is?
Yes.
So we're all on board. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to address us on this item? Seeing none, we'll come back. And it's way preliminary, but the preliminary feedback I've received, certainly to include Barry, is that it's going well. So thank you for your efforts. Been to a couple of presentations, and they're really quite, quite good, and it's a great and good question, Kate, with regard to the community, because we want to make sure that many, not all, because the nature of the beast, but certainly many participate, so we get good feedback on what people want this place to look like in a few years. With that is, let's see, you want, I presume you want four separate actions, is that correct? So let's go march through them. One A, who wishes to address that?
I move that we adopt the resolution, seven A one.
Second.
Move to the second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries four zero. On to number two.
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with Opticos Design.
And?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries four zero. Third?
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with BAE Urban Economics.
The second?
So move to the second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries four zero. And finally, number four.
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with Farr &amp; Peers Associates.
Second. Second.
Move in second, roll call.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, that matter carries four zero also, very good, thanks, thanks. We'll now move on to wildfire prevention protection action plan.
Mayor, as staff is coming down here, I'm going to kick us off and just give you a little bit of broader perspective. The first thing I wanted to mention is that this is being presented to you tonight as an informational item. And I think that's primarily because we wanted to make sure that we are getting public input from the community and from the city council on this particular action plan. The Chief Gray and Quinn Gardner here from our fire department, and they're going to do the presentation, but I also wanted to let you know that this is a cross-departmental effort. It's primarily the fire, the fire department, but also involves the police department and public works and community development and several city departments. Similarly, we've been trying to work cross jurisdictionally as well, so talking to our neighbors all throughout Marin and trying to be consistent with what's going on in other jurisdictions as well. The council asked staff when we here before, and I'm sure the chief or Quinn will say this, that you told us to be bold on these recommendations. And wildfire prevention will require boldness and a change in the way we look at our own homes, businesses and open space. So I wanted to point out probably what you'll hear as a theme, which is that you can't significantly improve our preparedness without making significant changes to how we're doing things right now. And then my last comment before I turn it over is that, as, as staff will explain, the need and all the things that we can do to, to make sure we're doing everything we can as a community to be wildfire safe is currently beyond, you know, what we're able to do as an individual fire department or individual staff. So you'll hear things that are great ideas that we know we should do that we just don't have the capability of doing today. So we want to have that conversation with the council. Some of that will probably happen tonight, some of it will probably happen when we bring this back for approval. But we, we both have to have staffing and resources to be able to carry these things out, and some of these things go beyond that. So we'll seek grants, we'll seek additional funding alternatives, and we're happy to come back to you at the next meeting, trying to be more precise on dollar ranges for how much these things would cost and try to present you with some more ideas for how we can fund those things. So I, I primarily just wanted to set it up as an informational item for tonight and let you know that we, we'll be taking everything that we hear tonight and making sure that we incorporate it into when we come back for approval for the action plan.
And appreciate that, and I'll just make one quick comment to put it in context. Jim has mentioned, quote, bold, and that was the direction to the chief, bold, and also, quite frankly, not constrained by our current financial situation because frankly, we're looking at some other possibilities if we have a shortfall, which we all know we have, and so giving that some, some thought. So the fact that we can't, quote, afford to do something right now doesn't mean that it won't be done. On the contrary, I'm, I'm committed to make sure that we do have the funding to provide for, if not all the recommendations, certainly most of those that are accepted this evening and moving forward. So don't, don't flinch if it looks like we have a lot that we can't, quote, afford, we will. Any case, chief, Quinn, good evening.
Mayor, good evening. Christopher Gray, Quinn Gardner, we're happy to be here. I'm also joined by my weather radio, which I think all of us know was very active last week, and we haven't even had storm-related fatalities in Marin. So pretty serious events, but that radio went off and alerted about a dozen times. So just to give you an idea, there's all sorts of different communication methods that are available out there to alert and warn people. This is just one. And if the AA batteries weren't enough, there's a rechargeable battery in there, and charging it isn't enough, there's a solar panel on the side and a hand crank. So there's really no excuse not to have a charged battery in there and have a failure in, in that way. So last week, we also experienced something else across the bay. That was an earthquake. And we would ask that the community be ever ready and understand that it's not a question of if, but when. And much like the wildfire, and I don't, I think we can, because it deserves repeating, your direction was to be bold with wildfire preparedness and protection. And we've outlined thirty-seven recommendations. They're, they're initial start. We think we can go further, but this will do a lot to enhance what we're doing. We did that based on your direction in August. In September, we joined several of the Marin agencies with the county board of supervisors, and lessons learned plan was drafted, interestingly enough, on the basis of the North Bay fire siege that occurred in 2017. Well, we all know what happened in 2018. If we thought 2017 was bad, 2018 was worse. I hope that 2019 isn't even worse still. But nevertheless, we've got a, a number of strategies we're going to outline to you and really look at, in a sense, all hazard planning, because I think everything we do, and much like the city manager talked earlier about a one-hour get-ready program, it's really up to all of us. And frankly, we have a, a plan that's been, we've spoken to community members about it over the last several months. We haven't solicited specific feedback on the comprehensive plan that we put forth now and are starting to do that. We've already been receiving them since the, obviously, the agenda was posted. A number of community members have engaged and we're just delighted with the input we're receiving thus far. The good news, I think, here today is that unlike floods and hurricanes, gosh forbid we have any of those, or earthquakes, there is a lot you can do as an individual to protect your home, and we're going to respond with some of the value of that going through here today. A lot of the recent scientific evidence has shown that the primary area of concern and where we can really do the most good is what's being termed as a home ignition zone. And think of your house as a house out. So if you hear us talking about, and ideally, I mean, the report had definitions for acronyms and stuff, so we're going to try to limit the fire speak and whatnot. However, I just want you to think about this home ignition zone and know that the majority of the fires that are starting, they're not from a wall of fire. A wall of fire didn't go through Paradise, an ember storm did. And it went from home to home. It really and truly was an urban conflagration. These, these fires can start with a vehicle on the side of the road, starting on fire with the right conditions. They can start from a single-family home burning. All it takes is, is the right combination of these weather conditions. And once it starts, that ember storm with millions of embers is coming at your house. Where are the weak points? It's going to find the point of least resistance. And so that area from zero to five feet, we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, but it's an area that I think as homeowners and residents, we can really do a lot of good in some very simple ways. So let's get started and go through some of this. Our current wildfire efforts, obviously, we've got a number of steps that have been in place since 2007. And although we've done a lot of good and removed literally thousands of tons of vegetation, there's much more we can do. We've obviously had a number of inspections that have occurred, both voluntary and then some that are systematic. But our focus has been in the wildland urban interface. So just think, and it's roughly eighty-five hundred plus parcels that are all within about a thousand feet of open space, which we have open space all around the community. But nearly about half of the community is what has been in this defined wildland urban interface. And conventional thinking was such, if you do a good job in the wildland urban interface, you'll have protected your community. What have we seen in the last couple of years? These fires were occurring and literally burning down neighborhoods miles from the open space. So our approach here and as an overall message is, we want to look at this on a community-wide basis. We've had good success with outreach, we've had good success in establishing Firewise Communities, which are, it's a nationally recognized certification that is really peer-based amongst neighborhoods. We'd like to see all the neighborhoods and be able to participate that. And as we did last year, we had adopted the Marin County's Community Wildfire Prevention Plan. I've mentioned this before, but I think it, it deserves repeating. We're also participating in a lot of endeavors that are, go on mutually because of our relationships with other fire departments and with the state, the California Office of Emergency Services. And that, the best example is the pre-positioning that's now occurring. That's in conjunction with red flags alerts. So you might recall that at the Paradise fire, actually the day before, Marin County staffed five additional engines. We had one of those engines here in San Rafael. And the morning of that fire, those five engines left here and went to Paradise and were part of an initial attack in that fire, and they were there for nearly two weeks after that. So there's a lot of things that are, I think, are in place, but obviously, we've got a greater list here that I think is going to help. This map is an at-a-glance look at what you can see is a lot of activity associated with. The yellow is really city open space projects that were completed. There's some small diamonds there that are actually where vegetation fires occurred to 2018. And the scattering of the green dots there are vegetation management inspections. And you can see that overall, the, the reddish area is actually where the wildland urban interface is. And then we've got some blocked areas there and just under a hundred acres where we had goat grazing that's going on. We've been doing goats in addition to work that's been done both by humans and mechanized means since 2007. This is probably a good picture of what a firestorm looks like and is about to envelop this community. So some of the basics, and I think everyone understands this, but it's worth noting here, is weather, topography and fuel all play a fundamental difference in how these fires build up and really create their own weather. In Marin, and for the most part, we had been fortunate with a higher humidity or fuel moisture over the years. And so while these fires started, they weren't drying out, and so you can, drying out the vegetation, but what's changing? The weather dramatically, as you can say that the equator's moving north here. And we're seeing a significant drying out of the vegetation earlier, so fire season really is year-round. And combine that with extreme weather, northeast winds that are dry, high wind temperatures, we've been seeing, in fact, in this recent storm, we saw wind speeds up over fifty miles an hour. And don't you know, it does, the fires are caused in the rain. There were several vegetation fires and other fires that were created during the storm. And obviously, topography makes a huge difference. And surrounded by hills, we obviously are at risk when it comes to that whole issue of fire behavior. This is a little bit of what I was talking about, the home ignition zones. And while this doesn't necessarily look like your average home in San Rafael, though the homes may be a little bit closer for just discussion purposes, it shows you that where the red line is, that's essentially what we're talking about in areas, and let's call it an immediate zone, zero to five feet, an intermediate zone, five to thirty feet, and then, and extended, thirty to a hundred feet, and possibly out to two hundred feet. But all of it matters in what goes on. And the fire will find a weakness. So whether it's stored wood, whether it's flammable vegetation, whether it's a flammable vegetation that's beneath a window, openings in eaves or vents, the construction type, it all matters as the fire approaches. I'm going to show, if this works here, a, a short thirty-second to one-minute video to get an idea of some experience in a firestorm. These people, this family was driving out of Paradise. They were some of the fortunate ones that were able to escape. I think this is the welcome sign to Paradise right there on the left. I don't know about you, but if you've ever driven through fog or smoke like this, this driver definitely wanted to get out of town. The other issue in what happened is some of the vehicles failed, so internal combustion engines rely on oxygen, air, in order to work. It's another advantage I consider to electric vehicles. So we have a wildfire safety action plan, basically broken into four fundamental areas, immediate ordinance changes, immediate programs and projects, some planned ordinance changes, and planned programs and projects. When we looked at this, we were trying to figure out a good way to categorize this and determine the most effective way to do essentially some alignment and prioritization. And so the ordinance changes look to mitigate wildfire risk, and in addition, we're recommending additional staffing funds and resources to address hazards. I may, I might mention that the countywide effort that's going on, when you look at basic needs, defensible space, vegetation management, the addition of hand crews, fire crews, public education, grant management is a big issue, notification, and then how do we handle low-income aspects of this and people that may not be able to afford it? So expanding a new outreach and education, new fuel reduction, particularly in a lot of the vegetation stands and the legacy vegetation that we have, expanding in new preparedness efforts, and then improving and increase what's called vegetation management plans. So this is an outline of the methodology and essentially a way to define the thirty-seven items. We've come up with a recommended action, and then what it means, the rationale, concerns, costs, stakeholders, and a timeline. And we've defined costs, and these are estimates at this point, rough order of magnitude, with the dollar signs there show you, and in terms of the single one, supported by current budget, two dollar signs requires reprogramming of budget, and three requires additional funding. So in order to help prioritization for both the council and the community. The ampersands here is supported by current staff, one, and then two requires reallocation of staff time, and then for requiring additional funding in order to make that staffing work.
And I would just add that each of those were considered individually and not as a cumulative entire project when we're looking at those evaluations.
This is just a quick summary so that you can see the thirty-seven things outlined here. And for the most part, there are a lot of existing programs in place. And as, getting back to the point of making this community-wide, that's the most significant effect that this will have in terms of improving our overall resistance and resiliency when it comes to wildfire. All right. Median ordinance changes that are recommended. Eliminate highly flammable vegetation throughout San Rafael, other than just the wui. And since 2007, the wui has restricted juniper and bamboo, and we're recommending to add to that acacia and Italian cypress. I also want to note here that, you know, we're not advocating that the axe-wielding plant police descend upon San Rafael and literally remove all of your trees, not at all. And we're, I hope to take a very fair, balanced and measured approach to all this. We would require, though, that every property owner maintain defensible space and establish this house-out ignition zone standards. We would clarify that smoking is prohibited in open space all year long. Right now, there are times when you can smoke in the open space. And there is a specific timeframe associated with fire season. We would advocate that those are year-round. We would also recommend that you set twenty, twenty-nine, or ten years out as a deadline to replace flammable wood shake roofs and be replaced with a Class A fire-resistant material. So number one, this is someone that's removing their junipers and improving their defensible space around the home. As I mentioned, in 2007, we prohibited junipers and bamboos in, in the wildland urban interface. The ordinance would update and would include acacia and Italian cypress. It would be updated to apply citywide. Mill Valley is another community that's also considering this. I noticed that Nevada Fire Chief, Bill Tyler's here, who's also president of the Marin County Fire Chiefs. We've been having meetings recently, and this is an item in terms of handling this on a community-wide basis that's being discussed with all the agencies in Marin, and there seems to be support for that concept. But again, these are, this is an informational report, and these are recommendations at this point. This is just showing you a home that's in a flatland residential area. Those are juniper bushes up against it. You can see the before, during and after photos of the volatility of the junipers. This was an errant cigarette butt that was thrown into the juniper plants by someone walking on the sidewalk. The threat of wildfire obviously extends beyond the wui, and fire safety requires that we have citywide vegetation standards, and we're recommending that you adopt Public Resource Code forty-two ninety and forty-two ninety-one. They're really, so to speak, in California, kind of a law of the land, and we're just, so that there's equity and fairness with everyone, because it really shouldn't matter. If you do everything right as a homeowner and your neighbor does nothing, you're at risk, the neighborhood is at risk. Nor with the boundaries, and again, fires don't know boundaries. But if, if we have a boundary that only exists to cover a proximity from open space... But if we have a boundary that only exists to cover a proximity from open space, and you're either across the street from it, or you're just slightly beyond that, one home does, another home doesn't. So we believe it's most equitable and fair to really do this on a community-wide basis and to apply it fairly and reasonably. Some of the things, as I mentioned, the good news is that there are simple ways to protect your home. This is a wood shake roof. This is a concentration of pine needles that have gathered. It's just a recipe for disaster. The fire will seek that out, and it will likely move very quickly through the home, and we won't be able to do much. Again, you have six fire engine companies and a Class 1 fire response and water system here, and outstanding, but we're just not going to keep up with the conditions we'd face in a conflagration if we don't start by first looking at each one of our homes and each one of our neighborhoods. These are some examples of defensible space that can be done very appropriately with a lot less of material, cultivated biomass, if you will, around the home, combination of non-woody, non-oil plants. We're not saying it's either got to be rocks, or soil, or succulents either. There's a lot of plant types that can be used in an appropriate manner and spaced and placed appropriately. So we think there's a lot of opportunity to, again, really focus on that zero-to-five-foot area. So this is, again, as we look at the zero-to-five feet, and this isn't an exhaustive list, but this would just be six different ways to look at that area from zero to five foot. Immediate area hardscape, short grass and succulents, no vegetation in contact with the structure, hardwood trees limbed, maintain it away that prevents a fire bridge. So a fire starting on the outside of the house, moving to the trees, and then connecting directly to the house. No vegetation underneath, under or near windows, decks, and stairs. Vines and ivies shall be well-irrigated, free of dead debris. No ground covering, mulch. Everyone familiar with that mulch? It's really more of a, an effect that's used at gorilla hair and things. So some things work very well under conditions of fire. Some things contribute to it and help it spread more rapidly. The, one I wanted to make a caveat there is, even though that's six alternative ways to look at the zero-to-five feet, obviously, people would be able to look at exemption requests. They may have, you know, I've been asked questions about roses, you know, what will they do? But there's obviously, fortunately, there are far less flammable plants than there are non-flammable ones. There's always a happy medium. So again, we don't want to think that this is a measure we're introducing potentially as a draconian way of doing things, and we're going to completely eliminate landscaping. Again, we're looking for a balanced approach. Again, apply the fire mitigation code 365 days a year. And the wood shake roofs. And again, we would look at all new construction to have fire-safe roofing. And the fact is, they have a much greater record of survival than those with wood shake This is number seven here. Obviously, you're aware, because you took action on it, to approve the submission of a grant last year to Cal Fire for $993,000. We've also are submitting another grant to the National Civilian Conservation Corps, AmeriCorps. Quinn, why don't you talk a little bit about some of the advantages of that grant?
Sure. So the NCCC or the AmeriCorps program, it's actually a crew, there's multiple crews based out of Sacramento, but actually, our only cost is housing, basically, and we could have them for six to 12 weeks. And so we'd focus a lot on vegetation management, potentially using the crew to help low-income private property as well as in open space. But then we'd also work with this NCCC team to get them involved in other community projects after school. The program really likes a well-balanced approach. So probably about 60% to 70% of the time, we'd focus them on fire mitigation and then some other good community projects throughout their stay.
There's a number of grants that are available. Actually, one of our staff members, David Catalonado, who's with us here tonight, was at a workshop today on hazard mitigation grants. We do have a hazard mitigation plan. Because there was a presidential declaration of an emergency due to the fires, and Marin was included, we are eligible for hazard mitigation funding. And so applying for the grants is another process that's going to be available to us. And then maybe you can mention too, the development with the Downtown Street Team.
Sure. We're in early discussions with the Downtown Street Team about ways that we might be able to engage, kind of as a potentially job, kind of working. Certainly, there's different skill sets and physical abilities, but we're kind of exploring those early options if we can kind of work with some of the folks there, working to help us with vegetation management, again, at lower cost, but also offering opportunities for those folks to find potential future employment with some new skills.
Part of the benefit of San Rafael and Marin is the open space we have. We've had challenges in the past related to fires that have started in the open space areas. Recommendation number eight, and we've been doing this practice in conjunction with the Police Department, but it's immediately seize ignition sources at encampments and remove encampments as quick as possible. So again, another consideration that we're making. Staffing request. Currently, we're benefited by one full-time and one part-time vegetation management specialist. They handle inspection activity. And there's a wide array of staff members that are actually involved in vegetation management, including firefighters. But we'd like to increase those inspections enforcement. Some of it's on the basis of, you know, you'll get a mailing as now that you're within the wui, you're one of the 8,500 parcels, you'll receive a mailing about it. And for the most part, we rely on and count on voluntary cooperation and participation and really a prevention partnership. You're doing that clearance because you understand your home's at risk, your family's at risk on the basis of it. And most of the time, that works out well, but it does require a level of both education and enforcement that's needed. And therefore, we're recommending additional staff for those vegetation management. We're also recommending that we increase the police ranger staffing that handles all the open space, not only for patrol activity, but also the detection of encampments and to minimize fire threats in the open space area and air parks. Number 11 is improve public education regarding fire-safe landscaping and planning for wildfire. And you really can't do enough of this. And this also includes a whole series of actions that I think we need to get into, and we'll talk about some of them regarding alerting and warning and evacuation, specifically identifying areas around the community for evacuation purposes, both on land, on water, areas of refuge, also dealing effectively with people with access and functional needs, dealing with the schools. And the access and functional needs, as it says there, includes a variety of considerations. So we have them both individually in residences, but also located in groups in some of the care facilities that we have. But they all mount to that message of we need to evacuate the community. How are we going to be able to do that ably if we're not preparing for it? So exercising plans regularly, having those plans in place. So I think there's, fortunately, but unfortunately, plenty of lessons learned that we can benefit from, but a lot of outreach and education, I think, will benefit our community tremendously. Increase capability for early fire warnings and detection. There is a network of cameras that are in place. These are high-definition cameras that are just upgraded in place and operated by Marin County, was funded with some assistance with PG&E. We've got the ability to add cameras that are located within San Rafael. Currently, one on Mount Tam looks at San Rafael, and another one on Big Rock Ridge behind us to the north looks at San Rafael. But we feel there would be some benefit to adding cameras within the network. Not only we would have the ability to control, but also the county would be able to see at the dispatch centers. These cameras also, they sense infrared, flame flicker, and they also have the ability to sense and differentiate smoke versus fog. So they're quite capable, and we hope that it would just enhance our ability to what is now occurring, actually. And you'll see text to 911 coming through shortly. That is just becoming more prominent in the dispatch centers and the use of literally all the cameras that people carry around with them and all the communication devices, all really sentries, and the ability for us to have an early warning detection. But so I don't think we can do enough to add to that, and this is just one of the additional layers that we're recommending. Improve public emergency alerting capabilities and policies, and I'm going to let Quinn talk about this a little bit.
Sure. So in its simplest form, our police department has a version of NICSOL that allows us to message folks that have chosen to receive messages from us. So it requires that they opt-in. Internally, within San Rafael, we don't have the ability to send a message, something like you might think of as an Amber Alert, where it's kind of forced on you no matter what, which obviously, in a really quick-moving situation, we would want the ability to do. The county does have that ability through additional technology, so we work closely with them, and we can use their alerting system. They also have an opt-in level of that. And so one of the recommendations is to increase our internal capabilities to make sure we have some more direct communication that doesn't require opt-in, and that's, you know, geographically based off cell towers, as well as then updating the policies associated with that. We don't want to get into an over-messaging situation, and we don't want to duplicate or contradict messages with the county. And the additional methods mentioned here, like Chief Gray mentioned earlier with the weather radios and some other options, we want to make sure we're exploring all those as well, so we're not becoming too heavily reliant on one singular technology. And then because there's never, ever, a time that we shouldn't be pitching this, if you're not signed up for your alerts, please make sure you do so. The top one is our police department, the lower, alertmarin.org is the county, and then PG&E actually does separate alerts for the power outages. So we like to make sure everyone's always aware of that. So WIA is one of the versions of non-opt-in messaging that we could potentially be expanding if we expand our internal capabilities. So they're much shorter messages. They are only messages that we want to use in extreme situations, but having that ability is really critical when you have a fast-moving situation.
One analysis we want to complete is of the fire roads and coordinate the location of strategic fuel breaks for the community. We think there's a lot of work that can be done in conjunction with our partners in Public Works and also our neighboring agencies. So I think there's a lot of improvements, not only to the width and surface, but also having them service fuel breaks. So I think they could be, you know, if nothing else, if a fire does start and it gets up into a ridgeline, we've got the ability to slow it down. Expand goat grazing for vegetation maintenance. We think it's a good tool, and obviously, they've done quite a bit of good in the community over the years, and, but there's some challenges associated with it. So it's not the, not the perfect solution in all cases, and it's also expensive. So we're looking at partnering Marin County with the use of the goats, and I think they're actually trying to keep herds around the county year-round, and which will be beneficial.
Yeah, I would add one of the main costs associated with the goats is transporting and moving them from one side to the other. So a lot of this also gets at the idea of collaborating with, whether it's private landowners or HOAs, to see if we can kind of do cost shares where we're all saving money because we're not transporting the goats and we're achieving more fuel breaks, but the city's obviously not taking the burden of some of that private property cost.
And one of the challenges is just finding adequate areas for them to graze in the wet months, so. Ensure that residents can evacuate through garage doors if power is out. So there's a new Senate bill that goes into effect on July 1st for new and replacement garage doors that have a battery backup. And obviously, it's been proven that this has been really an impact to many people that thought the only way out was if I was able to push a button. There are emergency means to open a garage door. Some people may not be able to reach it. We've got, whether you could consider outfitting something on a retroactive basis, adding counterweights to make them easier to open. It's just something that you may take for granted, that we want to try to address through a combination of education and awareness that I think would be really beneficial to the community. Some people may have not ever really tried to do that when the power is off. So I think through a comprehensive means and working both with individual residents and with neighborhoods, we can impact this and hopefully not have some of these types of conditions occur, because that's what happens. The power's out, the cell towers are out, you're, there's fire in the air, there's smoke, you're panic-stricken, and what are you thinking about? And some of this is, oh my gosh, that way's blocked, now I can't get my car. And people literally ran out on foot, and some didn't make it. So really sad set of circumstances, but I think there's some opportunities here that we could certainly help. I don't know whether some communities would look at, but obviously, the retrofit is an opportunity as well. We're told that depending on the year and the model, but there's these retrofit kits that can be applied to have the battery there. It's another thing to maintain. As we kind of found out, my wife and I, we had, you know, a new garage opener installed a couple of years ago. We selected the one with the battery backup. The only problem was they didn't put the battery in, which we didn't find out until the first power failure. So anyway. Vegetation management plans, they provide a template for property owners to develop fire-resistant landscaping. And it's really a way to kind of document what we're working out. Normally, we'll come out and work with a homeowner and help them provide a prescription for their individual home. And it really is tailored to their home. And this is a way for us to really help the resident and document that. And then, as a matter of course, ensure that there are vegetation management plans on file and make sure that if they're conforming to that plan, everything should be fine. And whether it's a transfer of ownership or something that we've got, so what can kind of drive you crazy is you see a new place, be either built or remodeled, and their junipers being planted alongside the house in an area where they're restricted. And so part of it really is a combination of efforts that you need to make to see that everyone's working together. The nurseries are working together, the landscape professionals are working together, the homeowners are working together, to recognize the hazard of some of these plants and ensure that they're not planted up next to the homes. And this is just talking about some of the VMPs and the objectives. There's obviously opportunities to increase them at the time of resale and transfer, but we're also sensitive to not loading those up, resales and transfers. But much like a smoke detector, sometimes looking at the vegetation is very important, and it might be an opportunity to improve the defensible space around the home. Ensure appropriate staff can send and receive emergency alerts, you know, as Quinn mentioned. We want to make sure that all the alerting capability isn't within the hands of someone that's out of town. And so that there's a pretty wide band of individuals that can, based on the information that we have, either it's a localized emergency or something that's regional that's going to affect and a cause of, whether it's an evacuation notice, it's a shelter-in-place notice, that we're able to have a lot of additional members, the staff, trained and aware of exactly how to do that, and a database that's able to be accessible. And again, that takes into account that everything's up and running. Some of these conditions, it may not be. So I think redundancy and layering with a lot of different individuals to help here will be appropriate. Reduce fuels along roadways. An example of, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have primary and secondary access routes if they can be easily impacted by fire. We're not going to be able to predict where all of the access roadways are going to be maintained, but I think it's important to know that some of them could make escape limited or dangerous. And so we want to make sure that, and we're not talking about, you know, pulling back 100 feet from a roadway, but right now, the limitation is about 10 feet on either side of the roadway, and it can be subject to easements and property ownership issues. And this is where I think we need to set a policy that it's extremely important that these access roadways, and which we, for the most part, enjoy for the most, two ways in and out, but that they're effectively maintained, and they can be easily overrun with vegetation that could be very dangerous in the time of a fire. This is an example of some reduction of fuel around critical infrastructure. You probably know, when PG&E was here last year, how they're increasing the distance that they're removing trees and cutting away. It's helpful, it's not perfect, and obviously, there's a whole nother story to the challenges that... that PG&E is facing with their infrastructure right now relative to fire safety, but I think it's important that if you, if you live around or near these power lines and other infrastructure, that we all work together in trying to establish as much clearance as possible around vegetation.
So, one of the things that we've, you might have seen the news when they, when the firefighters couldn't communicate with their cellphones on some of these bigger fires because of priority services and things like that, and that's just a micro example, and some, there's some, so there's some great free services that we can do as a city to make sure that we can communicate wireless priority service and GITS programs, whether it's cellphone or landline, so that the folks that really need to be talking during an emergency or disaster have priority in terms of getting either calls or data through. And so we just want to take some time, review that, enroll people that might need enrolled, and make sure that we've got that as up-to-date and accurate as possible.
Firewise Communities, I think, believe we have four now, and it's our hope to have every neighborhood in the community firewise. This is just a tremendous program, and it's really a peer program that, for the most part, can be established in a relatively short period of time, several months, but there's an ongoing commitment. And I think the nice thing about it is, really, it not only brings neighbors together to work on defensible space, it brings neighbors together to know each other a little bit better and work together and recognize that we're really all in this, to try to protect and preserve the community we love and live in, and so it's important that programs like this, I think, prosper. So we're doing whatever we can to support these efforts, and I'd like to see that we're successful with adding several more firewise communities this year alone. A review and update of this WUI map, I think, is going to be important, and again, about 45% of the parcels fall within the WUI, and the important thing to note here is there wasn't a solid verification done about the map and proximity to open space and other things. We still think there's a use for this map, and that we'd have to evaluate it really on a, not on a parcel-by-parcel basis, but field verification to make sure it was still accurate, and draw areas in that were unintentionally excluded.
Yeah, and there are some discrepancies between the map we approved in 2007 and maps the county has done since, and so we just want to take some time, look over those, and compare, and that's where that bottom bullet comes in, depending on how we adjust the maps.
Apply the fire code. This is in place now in our building code, and it applies to new homes, and then when there's a substantial remodel, that's 50% or more within the WUI area, and so we're asking that, and essentially, this is hardening of the home and using fire-resistant building materials for the home, if they're doing, again, this is, so think about a home that's, you know, 2,000 square feet, and they're adding 50% addition, or a really significant remodel, that they would apply essentially some of these hardening aspects of what would be required under what we call 7A. So think about siding, think about ensuring that eaves were boxed in, vents were covered if necessary, windows were double-glazed, decks were protected adequately, and things like this. So yes, they are additional expenses associated with it, and that's some of the evaluation that would have to go on, and the, we're suggesting the application would consider, rather than just within the current WUI, it would be within the entire community. And also consider that we would lower, and whether or not it would be viable to lower the threshold, to say a 25% remodel to trigger the requirement to upgrade your home to meet some of the more fire-resistant building material requirements. These are some examples of wildfire-resistant design, and one area, you saw a lot of this during the Paradise, which really had two ways in and out, to, in our community, would be establishing a residential hillside parking box program. So right now, you've probably seen some of the signs throughout, some of the hillside areas of the community, and talking about parking and restricted six feet from a center line, with the size of vehicles and whether people are, there's on-street parking, it can be very restrictive. In fact, we've got areas where we have difficulty, if not an inability, to actually put fire trucks in these areas. And so we request replacing the six feet from the center in designated areas with these boxes. So essentially, it would restrict parking, where there was narrowing of areas, and either these are tight turns or areas of some of these streets, in order to best affect emergency egress and access. We'd also suggest that there would be improved ability to enforce these regularly, and that there be a significant and more aggressive response on parking in some of these hillside areas under red flag events.
I would just add, this is in place in Larkspur and Mill Valley, so these are actually just Google images from those areas, so we have seen success there.
You want to talk about this?
Sure, so this was a recommendation from the fire, from the fire commission, and the idea basically is that if folks are building higher fences that border your property, it might actually limit your way to egress, either as a neighbor or your own property, and so assuring that any new fence has at least two gates, kind of in opposite directions, if you will, not two gates on the front, because that doesn't help a lot if you need to get out the back, but just trying to assure that folks aren't going to get trapped or stuck. Again, addressing access and functional needs in that regard, too. So the idea would be for any new fences to require two gates, kind of in those opposing directions.
Reduce fire risk and keep visitors using short-term rental safe, I think we all, hopefully, we look at them, the way we go in and the way we need to go out when we either visit a hotel or a short-term rental, you try to look at that, but visitors in the area may not be familiar with escape routes, traditional things that we all may think of, and their lack of familiarity. So we're, I understand that there are a number of regulations that short-term rentals face, but we think a couple of things may be helpful, either both requiring a vegetation management plan for that type of, really, business and a home that is for rent, and then educating visitors about safety measures needed in case of an emergency. Review and expand evacuation plans. We're actually proud of the fact that Marin County-wide, there's an evacuation plan that's in place, that was agreed to by both the fire agencies and the law enforcement agencies. That's an example of a plan, it's in place, again, on a county-wide basis, so not only evacuation types, we've got, we call it MTZ maps, a mutual threat zone, because if it's happening here, it's really happening there as well, and others are impacted. We've identified, pre-identified staging areas, shelter areas, and evacuation routes. So these maps are available, all of your fire and police staff have one, and as you can see here, and I'll open up, there's even pictures, in this case, of evacuation locations, and all this is available, not only on paper, but digitally. So they've been very helpful for all of the staff, but can we go farther? I mean, what residents know about everything's in place, and I think we can do additional collaboration with the individual neighborhoods. I think of the Peacock Gap area and looking at the, obviously, Dutra property, whether or not we need to look at areas, again, areas of refuge that we have that are already pre-identified, but both water and land-based evacuation routes need to be considered. So partnering up with different agencies to make sure that we have, when we do need to have that evacuation, that we've got, hopefully, everything in place to put an effective plan together. Comprehensive hazardous vegetation study, there is a, using a technology that's available called LiDAR, there's a study that's been done county-wide to examine a lot of the vegetation and identify on the basis of some of the vegetation where it may be higher priority to remove that, and this is more in open space. And then, we've got, obviously, a number of eucalyptus groves that we need to pay special attention to, some up off of Ridgewood, there's been a project that was done cooperatively with Marin County and San Rafael to thin a eucalyptus grove and then maintain it. It's a good example of what can be done cooperatively, so I think we want to expand those efforts to other areas within the community. Again, we talked a little bit about the fire roads, but create fuel interruption zones, and this is some of the work that was done, these are actual before-and afters in Gerstle Park, but to really, if fires do get into the open space, we want to keep those fuel levels to the minimum and slow them, slow them down, and so take into account both public and private property, try to introduce breaks wherever we can. But the key to a lot of this is the maintenance of effort, and so it, unless you're going to remove the fuel completely, it's going to grow back, and you're going to have to effectively maintain it, so it's a long-term proposal. Quinn, do you want to talk a little bit about this, the CERT members?
Sure, there's just obviously a lot of community interest, and with that comes potential for volunteer projects, and so we have about 450 already-trained CERTs in San Rafael that are constantly looking for ways to stay engaged and use their training and expand their training, and so we'd like to figure out some training we can do with them to help them with fire prevention, either through outreach, kind of initial inspections, helping us pre-identify some of the higher hazard areas so we can focus our paid staff efforts. And then, we have previously in the past had volunteer broom pool days, and as you may or may not know, broom takes multiple efforts to get away, it's an invasive species, it comes back, so it really is a great community project, and so we want to try to work with our volunteer, volunteer team and volunteer office here to kind of re-engage that in some of the areas that it's safe to do so.
Did you mention disaster service worker training, too, that goes on for city employees?
Sure, so all public employees in the state of California are disaster service workers required to serve if called upon in a state of a disaster, so we've certainly increased our training around that, and then there's also disaster service worker volunteers, which all of our CERT members are sworn in as DSWs, so they have coverage in an emergency. Recently, we had a few CERT members actually go up to Butte County and help out by request after the campfire, and so they had their DSW status here, cover them in case something had happened during travel, were re-sworn in in Butte, so Butte took on that liability, and then came back, and they'll be sharing those experiences in upcoming CERT meeting. But continuing to kind of expand how we're engaging volunteers pre is obviously only going to improve how we can engage volunteers after, so we want to keep all those efforts going.
Hazardous fuels through an abatement process, we have thousands of vacant parcels that are unimproved parcels, so how do you deal with that in really all one fell swoop? And so, we're coming up with a suggested abatement procedure to where annually, these lots would be notified, the owners would be notified, and then there's an abatement proceeding would occur, whether there's a notice, a public hearing, and they would have a choice to either clear the lot or allow a contractor to clear the lot. And if they elect not to do it, and the contractor does it, the costs would show up on their property taxes. So it's an effort that we're talking about, not only with San Rafael, but also with the county, but I think it could be very effective, and rather than us trying to run down essentially vacant landowners every year to deal with these lots that are a problem for us and present a significant risk to the community. Increase signage, and I'm, you know, for all intents and purposes, we're not trying to create sign blight and add to it, but I think there's a lot of effective messaging that can be done in identifying the hazard areas that are present and trying to increase public awareness about fire risk and wildfire danger and prevention. So not only we're talking about evacuation signage, but also increasing the amount of signs that are out there showing the open, where areas are accessible to the open space, the danger that's present there. So people think twice about whether they're casually smoking, whatever they're doing, and we've kind of seen it and experienced a lot of negative effects of that, but people understand the risk when they're in the open space through increased signage and notification. And last but not least is, what are we going to do with all of this vegetation debris? So coming up with a plan to deal with that, and so both for public education purposes, we've been discussing with Marin Sanitary how to cooperatively work, whether we add additional green waste containers, but all, provide remedies and solutions for people, not just create a problem for them, you need to clear this. So that's what the chipper days have been about, we want to increase community participation in those and provide outlets. We may have green waste collection days, where a bin's provided in neighborhoods and green waste can be brought in, and whether residents are doing it themselves, they're having someone assist them, I think cooperatively, we all need to work together, because this is clearly something that we cannot do on our own individually, and again, I want to thank and provide appreciation to you, council members, for the direction and the opportunity to speak before you today.
Well, Chief, thanks for the very comprehensive report, and of course, the exercise to lead up to this point, you've done an outstanding job, and just last week, we had an opportunity to preview this evening's presentation, met with a number of homeowners association members in this very room, and that, that presentation was well-received, and I suspect tonight, the reaction is going to be much the same, because a considerable amount of effort has gone into this by, certainly by, by the department and the two of you in particular. So we want to thank you for that, because certainly, the community is particularly sensitized at this point in time, I would suggest, to the issue before us, and rather than just to talk about it, we intend to do some things that you've suggested, they're specific and they're certainly doable, some effort will be required by the community, but I think the community is primed and ready to follow your, your many solid recommendations, so more will be said here in a moment, but I want to start by thanking you for the presentation and the work that's led up to it, so thank you for that. John?
Yeah, just really quick, thanks again for the great presentation, it was very informative, I know for us up here and for everybody that's watching and in the, in the audience tonight. Just a real simple question that was brought to me by my wife on this particular topic, we live on a street that has that one-way-in, one-way-out, cul-de-sac, and we back, we are in one of the wildlife urban interface areas. How do you, how does one go about getting in touch with who owns property that is not your own, and, you know, aside from doing, I guess, a public record search of properties to see how to get folks that are not taking care of the property that is going to be impacting yours, to either reach out to them or reach out to you folks?
The department is able to assist, and we do that on a regular basis, and then work to cooperate among the parties involved, and we get into some very, you know, complicated situations involving landowners, sometimes multiple public agencies. We look at it as, you know, simply trying to do the best thing to resolve the fire risk, but certainly, that's available to any resident in the community, and the department has the capability to assist with that right now.
Okay, great, thanks.
One question. Thank you, I concur with the mayor, that report was extensive, and it was the first time I've heard it, I mean, I've read the staff report, and as I understand it, you are taking input, so I, get out your pens, I'll try to go quickly, I mean, 37, again, I was so impressed how thoroughly you thought it through, so I just, I can't say that enough, even though I have lots of questions. So of course, the first one that gets everyone's attention is the first one that has removing "would be required." Anytime, as policymakers, we have a "would be required," we want to be very sensitive to what we're asking people to do, and that is to go into their own pocketbooks and to maybe change a landscape that they really like. So I just, I want to put that out there, I'm sure you've heard that in the neighborhood feedback. I would be very curious, and I'm not weighing in either way, but what other jurisdictions have done? Several times, Quinn, you talked about what Mill Valley was doing, but other communities, when they put that in, what was the reaction?
When we adopted the provisions of the current Wildland Urban Interface Ordinance in 2007, it was a big leap, and now, some other communities have joined that in restricting certain plant types. This, again, would be another leap, and essentially covering the rest of the community, the other half of the community. half of the community. My hope is that the rest of Marin will join us and we're going to do this cooperatively over the next two years. And I think it's really important that we're all fairly uniform in some of the standards. So we're working hard to do that. That also could potentially involve compromise, but I think what's, whatever done here will be fair and measured. We work with people. I'll give you an example, and not to say that we haven't been tough with everyone, but I don't know that there is an extension that had been requested that we didn't grant relative to taking time and involving direct assistance to some people that may not have been able to afford to remove certain plant types that they had around their home. That was why the provision of providing the chipping days. And certainly the availability with some additional resources to assist people would be very helpful there. Part of our, the basis for the grant would provide additional assistance there that we're currently applying for. I think everything we're trying to do is make it as easy as possible. Do some things that essentially cost minimal amounts of money, but let's give the example where the home is surrounded by juniper plants.
Right.
And, and frankly, we moved into a house that had them here in San Rafael as well, all surrounded with junipers. So I mean, and I've seen that in all the neighborhoods. And I think that the city actually in the fifties recommended that people plant junipers. So, you know, what's Gray doing, coming along saying, you know, wait a minute, never mind what the city said, now we're saying to do this. But facts are facts and the fire danger that those plant types provide is significant. So whatever way can be done, it may take time. It may be done in phases. But we're willing to work with the community in the, in the long run to see that it's done appropriately. We've, we've got some recommended dates and some compliance dates, but those are just recommendations at this point. But we're looking at the, the long-term goal and the effectiveness and knowing that you're much better off with voluntary cooperation than sending someone, you know, a notice that's going to cost them additional money. The other thing that I'll add, and I probably, and there may even be some that are here in the audience. I've spoken to many people that would give testimonials about the benefits they found at their home. Once they got around to removing the juniper, and actually now they could see their home, their home was safer, and they have much more attractive landscaping around their home. So, and whether you equate that to property values or anything else, it is a lot safer. And this is a community-wide risk.
Right. Absolutely. And I appreciate that you named the four plants because, and then I skipped to number four, no vegetation in contact with structure. And I actually looked at my house and I actually don't have any. So it's not a personal thing. It just, it wasn't by design. It's, it just happened to be the way it is. But I was walking around my neighborhood after I was reading the staff report, and I don't think I saw any other house in my, and I live in the Sun Valley neighborhood, there wasn't one person that didn't have vegetation in contact with their structure. So again, it's not that I'm saying we shouldn't do this. I think it's talking to the community about it and finding out what happened in other communities. Because that, I mean, that's a, that's being bold.
Specifically on the landscaping, Sonoma, since the fires, has actually started doing like landscaping templates. So for folks rebuilding, they're actually offering like, here's some, here's some templates of ways you can, so there's, there's some other examples out there. Fire Safe Marin's a great resource, even just from, you know, the, the list of species and things like that. But I think that's one of the reasons we really have kind of an emphasis on the VMPs is recognizing that with that, you can kind of help provide more templates and more structure for maintaining attractive landscaping that's also more fire safe.
And that's an excellent point because in your deck, and I didn't quite get it in the staff report, was exemption requests will complete a VMP. So there are opportunities of, it's, it's saying we're reasonable here. We're willing to have a conversation. And as an aside, I learned that my house insurance offers free fire analysis and I did take them up on it. And I actually had a former Marin Wood fire employee that came on out and went, went through and wrote up, actually not much because I didn't have anything next to the house. But I thought that was really interesting. So other people out there, you might have that as part of your policy. So, and actually what I did learn, and I wrote myself a note, is he talked a lot about cleaning out your gutters. I mean, he went on and on and on about cleaning out your gutters. So that would be something as we're going out there, that people clean out their gutters.
One of the best things you can actually do is, is utilize the screens that are available widely. You put on the screens on, they serve two purposes, to prevent leaves from buildup and not allowing your gutters to flow during rain, but also protecting you from that buildup of needles or leaves from trees. The, the whole point of that though is although you may be subjected to that during windstorms, is tree limbs shouldn't be overhanging your, your roofline and, and that close. And that's where some of the problems can be associated with the fire risk.
Yeah, no, it's interesting. So keeping going, the shake, shake in wooden roofs. And I was doing some search online and there are other communities that have done that. I guess Burbank done it in twenty, did it in 2011. Again, best, I'm big on best practices. What did Burbank learn? You know, get on the phone with them and find out. They did do a roof census. They had a big article about the roof census and I know that was part of the recommendations to fear. What is it we're trying to ask? I have no sense of, one, how many people we'd be asking that of? And the cost of a roof replacement, I mean, that's probably forty, fifty thousand dollars. I mean, that's a big nut.
There is some potential in having the extended timeframe there that we, we potentially, there is mitigation money out there that with the support of the city could be used on private residents along those regards. So we'd have to look at what those numbers were, the staff time associated with that. But there is potential that we could look at potentially programs that could help. We also have to consider our own structures as well, of course, so.
Yeah.
One thing, just a note about the wood roofs. I have some personal experience with this and also passing an ordinance. It was in the nineties, was effective and involved in with the census activity and all the rest of that. So one thing to note is most everyone's fire insurance went down that replaced their wood shake roof. And secondly, one thing that's notable, we have not had very many, and I couldn't even name the number, it has to be a small number, that have even been new wood shake roofs that have been put on in the last ten years. So any, anyone that has a wood shake roof by 2029 likely has over 20 years of use of that roof. So we were trying to really give them the ability to have an extended life on, on that roof and then replace it with a more fire-resistant type.
Yeah, no, that makes absolute sense. On seven, increase funding and resources, always a conversation for us. And you did mention the grant funding that you were seeking. And it sounds like, and it's come through, that the county might be looking at seeking funding, like, again, collaborating all this because we truly are in, in this together. And that's one thing that struck me about your report. Yes, it's very San Rafael-centric, but fire doesn't know any boundaries. So what is it that our neighbors are doing? What's Nevada doing? We can do everything, but if they don't do it. So to me, that's a big part of what I want to really look for is a collaboration with the other agencies and have them be also bold and brave. And we'd help have those conversations. Asking about additional vegetation management staff, this one really focused on fire for all the good reasons. You've talked about hazard mitigation and disaster preparedness. Are these skill sets, can people expand their skill sets so it's not just vegetation? Like, let's be looking at flooding, let's be looking at earthquake potential or, yeah, problems with earthquakes. I mean, to me, that would be interesting. So they, they actually wear more than that one hat?
Yes, they do. The, the skills are transferable to a whole number of others. And as we started off really talking about all hazards.
Right. And that's, and that is one thing to remember, even though all these are out fired, we have unfortunately, in our beautiful state here, we have many hazards that we can deal with that we get to have. Okay, I'm quickly going down. See, I'm already at sixteen. I liked, really liked the idea of, I know you were hesitant of attaching it to the resale inspection report in terms of the garage doors or whatever. To me, that makes sense. That was one thing when we had talked about the resales up here last year, it really is a tool. It's both a tool for the people that are, that are moving in there so that the house is compliant and safe with today's standards. So not that we want to make that report even longer, but in this case, I would absolutely consider that. I thought that was a great suggestion. The VMP, put it online. Put it online so people can figure out what it is that they're trying to fill out. So whether they, they can get a jump on it and figure out whether they have issues or not.
It is, it is online now, but it's...
Can they submit it? Can they fill it out? Like, is it one of those live?
For the improvement.
Okay. No, that's great. And again, it has to do with what's really easy. I was really interested in your conversation about communication. So the League of California Cities has had a bunch of articles about this, of course, because it affects all of California. And I was curious because former Governor Brown responded, or excuse me, approved a First Responder Network Authority, First Net. And so he talked about that. Is that something that would even affect San Rafael? Is that really for bigger communities? Like, is that a thing? Is that a tool that we would have?
Uh, yes.
I know. Instead of taking a long time, was what the article said.
Yeah, and there's, there's, I think there's still some confusion on that end. There's certainly not necessarily a pure expertise on this end, but essentially it's one of the other tactics. My understanding of First Net is it's more provider-based. And so we definitely want to encourage our first responders that have private phones to be able to do that. We also want to consider if we have firefighters that don't have city-issued phones, we want to put their cellphones on WPS. There's no cost to us. We just have to go get their provider information and enroll them. And so there's, there's multiple levels to it. And then there's also the difference in some of the services are good for voice priority and then some of them are good for data priority and then some of them are good for landlines. And so that's where it kind of becomes a pretty extensive project when you start adding all those layers, but it's something that we certainly find value in.
And they did allude to that in the article, that it does, it gets very, very complicated. And then if you have the wrong kind of data plan, terrible article, a part of it that they had overrun their data and so then they slowed down the speed and everything else so messages weren't getting through. To that end...
That's true. And I just want to add to that. So AT&amp;T is currently providing First Net services. So as a first responder, and it's a broad definition of first responder, you can apply for First Net service. So we, or I did it personally last year. And so my AT&amp;T, we have, our city service is through Verizon. And so I have a personal phone that's AT&amp;T. So I went through this whole First Net process. Sometimes you just, so how does this work? And what are we going to be subjected to? But it's a really easy service and it's a priority. In the old days, you used to think of the phones that would usually work when everyone else's phone service didn't work was a pay phone.
Right.
And so if you, if you think about it in terms of a priority service, that's probably the best description for it and on a different network. And so we're encouraging first responders actually to, to join the service and hopefully they don't have their data throttled and can use it at capacity at all times. And it's a robust system that, a network throughout the United States.
Right. So in addition, would you also consider, again, from the articles, this civil defense sirens? I mean, that was something that, and it was not anywhere in your report, but hey, they would get our attention. I mean, we, you know, we all hear it when the clock chimes at noon, you know, with the mission, so.
So traditionally, the civil defense sirens in any outdoor warning system is designed to tell somebody that's outside to get inside.
Oh, okay.
So there's sort of a false sense of security that a lot of folks end up relying on the sirens. And when you're in bed asleep, I mean, maybe you hear them, but that's not what they're designed for. And so the, the traditional messaging behind sirens is someone that did emergency management in the West where a siren means a tornado and it means get inside. But that, that holds true uniformly. And so there, there is some more technology coming out that's increasing the ability to kind of do announcements via siren. Some neighboring communities are looking into that. But my big concern with that is just the mis-messaging and the potential confusion and the reliance on sirens without signing up for everything else.
No, that makes absolute sense. I, I mean, I think we all heard a siren, we would be running in all different directions. I was just, I was curious. And I know you talked about NICSOL and we're always promoting that. If you're not on it, sure to get on it. It's interesting because social media alerts, which is kind of like NICSOL, but not really. I know whenever there's an earthquake, the first thing I do is jump on my phone and look at Twitter because it, it is the fastest response. So as you're going through the way that we get information out, and it's not like you be on Twitter all the time, but, but considering those as great ways to get information out. Okay. Firewise community, I think it'd be great if all of San Rafael was firewise. I love that program. I haven't taken it myself. I know people who have and they speak really highly of it. It builds resiliency and it does what we want it to do. So I was very grateful to see that in your plan. California Fire Code 7A, I don't know what that code is. I did not read it. But fifty percent seem to find going to twenty-five percent, like, so that, you have that in there? I didn't have enough information to know. And you said it actually when you were verbally giving the staff report, like, and maybe go to twenty-five percent remodel and have this to kick in. I, I don't know what that is. And I guess I should have looked up Fire Code 7A, but...
No, I think it's a good point. And part of the analysis goes, well, actually, how many permits do we have that are brought forth annually that are at fifty percent? How many are at twenty-five percent? What impact would that really have? And some of those things are, we're not sure. And so we need to be further studied.
Okay. The parking box program, it absolutely makes sense. It makes so much sense that, you know, living here when the Oakland fires took, took, and when they occurred. And I also know that anytime we talk about parking up here, when we talked about ADUs and JDUs and people came out and talked about parking and how important their parking was, again, a great program and engaging with those residents that live in the hillsides. How do they do it? I'd love to know how Mill, Mill Valley's handling that. They have a lot more of an issue than we do. But it's a great idea. I'd be curious how it'd be implemented. And I am almost done. I am, I again cannot believe that you had thirty-seven of these, very, very comprehensive. Okay, two more comments. One, establish additional fuel interruption zones. I just wanted to highlight to everybody that on past costs, the current list is half a million dollars. I had to highlight that. That, that's like not even anything new that the current list today is half a million dollars, unless we all get out there with our shovels and our rakes and start doing it for you. Okay, let me just go down to the very end. In addition, and Quinn, I'm sure you know something about this as well, that the local and state fire agencies formed a commission, the Disaster Readiness for Safer Communities, DRISK, that's the acronym, that was created at the government level. They had fifty million of the state budget. So they really recognized the importance of working together. I don't know if that's something that San Rafael would participate in. I don't know if it's a collaborative effort that shows how to collaborate across jurisdiction. But as we do this, again, I can't emphasize how do we bring everybody together, so we're not going at it alone.
And Councilmember Colin, one of the byproducts of DRISK is the pre-positioning of first responders. So essentially staffing up during predicted fire weather conditions. So there are other benefits, but that's one of the primary ones that we've already seen since July of last year.
Okay. I found my very end of my notes, interesting that the city of Fremont, as well as Oakland and Berkeley, all installed microgrids. Again, you want to be bold, you want to be out there. I don't think we're, they're ready to go there, but I just thought that was a fascinating concept. And the microgrid grids are so you don't have to draw energy from the grid, you actually have energy and they're using off of stored batteries. Again, that's like the cutting edge. And then we do have other jurisdictions doing it. I don't want to do that here, but knowing all the way what's out there. And then just finally, we are an age-friendly city. We're working on becoming an age-friendly city. You did talk about the garage doors. I would encourage you to go farther and talk to the Commission on Aging at the county. We actually have our own age-friendly volunteer task force that is working on that because that's one issue, but there might be other issues that has to do with our senior population that we might not be considering. And now would be the time to put that in there. So thank you again. I was impressed and appreciate the opportunity to provide comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Bus.
Oh, I have some general comments and I'm very interested to hear what the members of the public have to say. Just two thoughts that maybe there's something we can do to help. And that is on the uniform rules throughout Marin County, on how important it is that we all really work together on this. If the rules are different here in San Rafael versus Nevada, for example, on vegetation management, the nurseries aren't going to be able to cooperate. If everything's the same, we can, we can get the nurseries and the realtors all, all pulling in the same direction. So to the extent you need assistance with us, perhaps contacting our counterparts, we are at your service. Another thought, vegetation management plan sounds a little unattractive. I'm thinking that maybe if we jazz it up a little bit by getting some help from perhaps some of our volunteer landscape designers, so that we have something that looks attractive and people want to do this, that, that will make it even better. Because just saying, you can't have any of this and here's another government-approved can't have any of this, and here's another government-approved list, you know, have fun. But if you had attractive drawings, I think that might help, and templates for that.
Right, yeah. I have a vegetation manager in plan, do you? Right. Or whatever it is, but I, right, make it very cool. But I know, that's, those are great suggestions, so we appreciate it very much.
And they've actually taken some steps to provide what it might look like, rather than just desert for five feet. So thanks for doing that. I would, I'm not going to go through point one through 37, because we've already done that to some degree on the side. But I would suggest that the community is ready for us to do something like this, if not exactly this, and I want to hear from the community. But we're ready for this, it's a different time in terms of acceptance, and gee, we're going to have to force people? I don't think so. I think that after Santa Rosa and certainly Paradise, the community is asking, at least I'm hearing from the community, that we need to do something, and you've taken the first step in perhaps a long series, but we will be addressing this certainly hand-in-hand, not only with San Rafael, but certainly community-wide. But having said that, to be blunt, San Rafael's going to lead the charge on this, and we'll see where it takes us. Others will join, I'm sure. But this is something the community certainly is interested in, and greatly appreciates the work that's been done thus far and further down the road. Public, starting with, you're on, Kelly.
Hello, thank you. And thank you all for the work you've done on this. I sent a letter, but I guess it wasn't made part of the public record, so Chris is going to handle that part and how we learn to do our job correctly.
Right, thanks.
Okay. Yes, I read your plan, and of course, I've read this one, the big one. And we believe the 37 objectives need to be separated, obviously. It's like, any kind of disaster responses, they need to be triaged, and so we just want to give our position on how to, how we would like to see them triaged or prioritized. Our residents have been working very hard with, using private resources, we've responded to the notices and the juniper and bamboo removal and so on and so forth. We've had three very large educational outreach programs since November 11th, 2017. So, we have multiple volunteers, I'm a CERT graduate, lots of CERT people, lots of volunteers, and we'd like to share our volunteerism. And yeah, you know, we actually, we have people ready to get the rakes and the shovels and go out there and do something. So I would really like to see more outreach to the homeowners' associations, how we didn't get notified of last week's meeting, we don't know. Rafi has my email address, all, everyone, and your government does. But, so, we're looking for the outreach to individual homeowners, we think should be second tier. I mean, not the educational outreach, everyone's doing it. Marin Fire Safe, all the, all the fire department, all the foundations and everyone else is doing outreach, and the homeowners are doing outreach. And we all know since last August about the five-foot, bring it in, bring it in, bring it in, to the ember intrusion. Is that it?
It is, but complete your thought.
I'm so sorry. Okay, what we did expect from our city governments, and we want to be triaged, are objectives 12 and 14. Early fire warning and detection and analysis of, the early detection, we're thrilled to see San Pedro Ridge and San Rafael Hill on that list, because those are critical, we believe. And the other one is the analysis of fire roads and strategic fuel breaks, fuel breaks. We really want to have our fire roads opened again. Our Glenwood neighbors just documented four fire roads that are completely overgrown. The gentlemen there know about Locklomen Highlands and the Locklomen Homeowners Association documenting Lockhaven Fire Road, which is now open, thank you, and the disintegration of Les Casas Fire Road Extension. So, we on the East Peninsula would really like to see our fire roads. It would engender trust in city government, it would make us feel like, okay, these things that we feel are really important are being done, and give more support for perhaps the added costs of code enforcement. And code enforcement, equal code enforcement's going to be really critical to garner support. Thank you.
And I'll just add, before you leave, we're going to have a follow-up meeting. This is every month, get-together with the various homeowners' associations, and this happened to be one of those, and there was, presentation was made, and the conclusion was, once City Council reacts to the report, presumably this evening, accepting it, it will then go out to the community, particularly neighborhoods, but the community's members, to further review what we have here. I didn't feel comfortable releasing it, you know, last week, because it hadn't been approved by this council, but now that, you know, now, later this evening, it has been approved, then we can redistribute it and get reaction from people, and additions or maybe deletions, but reaction. So make sure that we have your address, if you would.
Who's you, because everyone I know has it, so...
Send it to the city manager, if you would, and we'll make sure you're on the list.
Has it?
Good, okay, well, he'll make sure that you're on the list.
Okay, in a long time. Other thing, just on a parting shot, how about donating space at the community center for homeowners' associations to do fire prevention outreach?
Thank you. Well, you know, I'll just comment, your enthusiasm and acceptance and willingness was pervasive throughout the community, and just, you know, like I said last week, so I think this thing's going to build, and we'll take care of ourselves. Thank you. I'm sorry, we've got one other person preceding you. Chris, and then you're up.
Good evening. Good to see all of you. I'm part of the Locklomen Homeowners Association, which I think most of you know. I don't know if you can hear this. I just wanted to add one point, and I'll make it short, because it's now 9:15. I would like to see consideration for an ordinance for nurseries, both retail and commercial nurseries, that it's prohibited to have plants that are flammable under our review, our regs. This way, you're taking care of the input. So, most folks don't know what plants are flammable and what plants are not, so why not make it easy on everybody and just have it set that way? Also, I'd like to see some kind of regulation or requirement that if you are in a nursery, be it a commercial or retail nursery, that you are made aware, that there are these sites that have all the information that a homeowner would need, and a commercial firm that does landscaping, that they should be going to these sites. I don't know how far we can go with rules and regulations, but maybe there's some outreach that we can do in contacting all these blow-and-glow services that are not true commercial services to let them know that there are regulations. Many of these people just go and buy plants anywhere and then put it in the homeowner's yard and call it a day, and the next thing you know, you've got a whole bunch of junipers growing all over again. So thank you.
And thanks for your comments, interesting point. Andy, yeah?
Really a great and comprehensive effort, wonderful work. A couple of things, Kate, you did a fabulous job really going through everything, but I just wanted to make a few comments, one of which is, I think we need to always exercise caution when we're layering on additional regulations and requirements. One of the concerns that I have is that the more difficult we make it for people to secure building permits, the less likely they are to secure building permits, and we may in fact be discouraging people from addressing life safety concerns on a broader sense. The second thing is, with respect to the fuel management side, there were, I've observed a couple of things in the field that I'm curious about. The fuel management practices at Dominican are kind of an interesting case study, where what you see is, the campus is grinding up all sorts of, you know, tree limbs and other stuff, and then they're depositing them along the roadway in kind of endless windrows of tree chippings. Now, that may be a good forestry management practice, or it may not, but I think it might be wise to look into that and see if it in fact is a good idea, because some of these windrows of chippings are five or six feet thick, so they're, you know, I don't know, maybe it's a good thing. But the other thing too is that cooperation with our neighbors and other governmental service providers in our own community, like the school district, I think is really key. For example, if we look at San Rafael High School's campus, there are substantial groves and eucalyptus trees, and, you know, perhaps as a long-term objective, we may want to eliminate some of these blue gum groves and replace them with native vegetation. So, at any rate, you know, that's something we may want to consider. Thank you.
Good point, thanks, thanks so much.
I'm Paul Manult, member of the Dominican Firewise Committee, and a few comments on the plan. I welcome this very much, and I'm ecstatic to see that it's in front of us, and I have a few suggestions. Number one, the plan talks about grants, but we know that grants come and grants go. We need a permanent source of funding. And there's two models that we can look at right now, at least that I'm aware, there are probably others. The first is the Measure U in the Southern Marin Fire Protection District in 2018. They had an assessment of $200 per dwelling unit or apartment, which would generate $3 million a year. That passed by 75%, and it's basically in perpetuity, or at least until the voters rescind it. So I think that's a good model to look at. The second one is the Oakland Hills 2004 Wildfire Assessment District. And that was a 10-year program, charged, it assessed $65 per housing unit or apartment, generated $1.8 million a year. And it was to be renewed in 2017, and the renewal failed by 66 votes. And as you know, they have to have a two-thirds vote to get these assessments passed. So those are two great funding examples, and I think we definitely need to look at those. Grants aren't going to cut it, they're great, but we can't live on grants. They come and they go. The second is, has to do with the vegetation list. I think it's a great start, maybe, and maybe the, we're taking it easy because we don't want to scare the pants off people, but frankly, I think that the vegetation that we're controlling in addition to juniper, bamboo, acacia, and Lombardi cypress, should include the other conifers, pines, firs, spruces, maybe even redwoods, and eucalyptus. But those would be regulated, the regulations would not require absolute removal, they would be scaled to the size of the tree, and maybe follow the method used by the National Park Service, they remove eucalyptus and other trees that are eight inches in diameter or smaller, but they leave the larger ones and they manage them. Thank you.
And I'll just comment that with regard to your first point, we are looking at that.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah?
Mr. Mayor, the Council, I didn't realize we had to sign in, but my name is Al Bar, I live in the Locklomen homeowners' neighborhood. I want to compliment Chief Gray and his staff on a very comprehensive report. However, there's one issue that I like to raise, and that is objective number 34. I don't know whether you want to bring that up or not, but I can just read it very quick. There we go. Reduce hazardous fuels through an abatement process on privately-owned, unimproved lots. I would suggest that you delete the word "unimproved." The reason is, is because there's significant fuel in our, my own lot, if I can, I'm guilty as charged, because my home was originally built for the former mayor of San Rafael, John McInnis, who planted over 30 pine trees in my backyard. Now, I've eliminated several, but there's still 20-some-odd more to go. I don't want to remove all of them, but they have to be thin. But there are, I'm, shall we say, typical of a senior who has lived in my home for several years, and many seniors have planted these trees and bushes, and I suggest that in this objective, emphasis should be put on lots owned by seniors. Good luck. And funded by grants to support, to support thinning out of these plants. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Bill Carney, Sustainable San Rafael. We applaud the city's development of a comprehensive approach to managing vegetation and open space for fire, supported by increased funding. Our goals need to be both a fire-safe human environment and also a healthy natural environment, healthy forests, watersheds, soils, healthy habitat. To that end, the vegetation management strategies need to include both fuel reduction and also carbon management, or carbon sequestration. That means not only removing dead, stressed, or otherwise fire-prone vegetation, but also encouraging the healthy vegetation to thrive, storing carbon in its wood and roots and soil below, and also instead of going up in flames and adding to carbon pollution. It means assuring proper composting of plant debris, composting so that the carbon content isn't released as a greenhouse gas, contributing to the climate change that after all is making our landscape increasingly combustible. Comprehensive vegetation management for fuel reduction and natural resiliency needs to focus first on removing highly flammable, non-native plants, like those that have been mentioned. Reviewing, I'm sorry, reviving volunteer broom poles is a start, but again, there's a huge, but there's a huge opportunity here to create entry-level jobs, reducing fuel and restoring nature through programs like the Conservation Corps and even the Downtown Streets Team. Goats have their place, but real people and real jobs are also needed. A smart and comprehensive strategy is key in requiring vegetation management plans when property is sold. Let's also include energy audits at the same time to help, again, reduce the climate change that's fueling these fires. In reducing fuels along roadways, let's do it in concert with existing general plan elements, calling for complete streets and healthy urban forest that cools neighborhoods and absorbs carbon. We're seeing here in this consideration that climate change is starting to exact real danger and real cost. Let's assure that our response addresses comprehensively both the impacts and the causes of this growing crisis. Thank you for your leadership.
And thank you, Bill, and thank you for your letter, which we do have a copy of.
Hi, my name is Kingston Cole. I'm a founding member of the Lincoln San Rafael Hill Neighborhood Association. I've been walking that hill for 20-plus years, the old man on the hill. I have recently written two Marin Voice editorials that were published, dealing with, I think, the failure of government policies, as well as global climate change, in addressing the fire problems we've got. We've had four fires on my hill, so we are definitely the free-fire zone of San Rafael. I have four of the action items I'd like to address. First of all, compliments to you, thank you very much, it's an excellent plan, you've got some mountains to climb before it all works out, but I'm with you. We'd love to have the cameras, on item 12, obviously, up on San Rafael Hill, so thank you for bringing that up. The fire road survey, we desperately need that, we've already started to put in, you just graded the steepest part of San Rafael Hill, it's got to continue. And we almost lost, you know, 100 homes over on Graceland in the last fire, it just was that close to jumping. The parking boxes, we, you know, the San Rafael Hill, I can only speak to my neighborhood, nobody pays attention to the six-foot thing. The garbage trucks in the morning, the only way they get through is they start honking their horns, and to get people to move. I can't imagine what it would be like in the conflagration. Item 34 is the abatement process for privately-owned, unimproved lots. We have a lot of that on San Rafael Hill, it's a mess. Two of them I know have been homeless and killed. Two of them I know are, have been homeless encampments, and one of them I still may be. It's a major problem we've got. The last thing I'd like to say is, I worked with Chris Gray when he was not a chief, all right, on the 2007 ordinance, walking around and talking to people about getting rid of their, their bamboo and juniper. I have to say, in all, in all deference, that it's been, we did a great job, we walked around, got as much done as we could, and it's been that, that whole process has been honored more in the breach than the observance. Everything's back, we have lots of juniper. We have, now you proposed to enlarge it. I'm with you, but one of my problems is with the city and, and the state and the federal government, too, is if we hold up our end of it, the city has to hold up its, its end too. All right. And I beg and plead with you to, to take that into consideration. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Belle Cole. I'm with Organizing for Action in Marin and with Lead on Climate. And I'm speaking on behalf of these organizations. I want to commend this speech, this presentation. It is the comprehensiveness, the specificity, the responsiveness to public concern. We are especially pleased with the recognition of the threats from climate change, mitigation of both increased carbon emissions and wildlife risks, and the role for community involvement, objective 22, and also objective 11. In line with your action, we have a new initiative coming along. We call it Firestorm II, a call for informed action. And you're going to focus on learning from our earlier 2017 Firestorm event and the many actions now underway throughout Marin and in San Rafael concerning the connection between greenhouse gas emissions and the devastating firefight, wildfires we're experiencing. So, the goal of this Firestorm II is to update the public's understanding about the nature of California's recurring firestorms, what measures are being taken to prepare for, manage, and mitigate the dangers and the destruction, and the role that climate change plays in escalating the magnitude and the duration of the fire season. And our approach is to bring together the mix of relevant expertise, fire professionals, climate and forest scientists, urban planners, journalists, and others to address specific questions that we will pose to them. And we hope to identify benchmarks in these areas to help focus our efforts. So, we hope to have an event this spring culminating in a town hall early summer where officials, elected officials, will open the subject to the public as they seek direction on policy, regulation, and executive orders. Wherever we turn, there are obstacles to this kind of action. The City Council is contemplating, and we, as activists, will do what we can to help confront the obstacles and help you face and educate the public on whatever needs, needs to be done. So, we thank you for the opportunity for telling you about this, and we look to involve as many people as possible. Thank you.
And thanks so much for joining us this evening. Anyone else? Kate, you have been appointed, by the way.
Thank you. I also just want to thank you for this effort. I have a couple of just quick comments that I wanted to add to the other great comments that have been made. One, in terms of ignitability, we had Todd Lando speak at an MCL Water and Watersheds meeting, and something that surprised me, what, he said the most cost-effective thing you can do to your home is to put screens over the vents in your house, whether they're in the crawl spaces below your house or in the attic spaces of one-eighth inch or less. And that prevents embers from getting into the home. And he said, you know, that might be something, a quick and easy fix for all of us to do. Because I think ignitability is one of the key things. It's not just reducing fuel, but looking at ignition sources. The other thing is, in terms of reducing fuel, I think there needs to be some detailed look at, at, the, the Marin Municipal Water District was telling us all to put chips and take our lawns out and put chips all over our yard and do planting that way in order to preserve moisture in our soil. I think a vegetation management plan needs to take a holistic view on, similar to what Bill said, but we need to look at soil health, we need to learn how to deal with our drought-tolerant landscapes going forward, take an ecological approach. We need to sustain the species of insects and birds and mammals that are also in our areas. And lastly, I just wanted to say, in terms of topography and geography, we need to also include this in our planning effort and our general plan update. It's time where we shouldn't be putting new structures in either places that have a history of burning or in places that are canyons with valleys that produce those ember storm risk areas going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy? Yes, sorry.
Hi. Again, thank you very much for this very comprehensive, informative, detailed plan. I'm Roger Byers, Glenwood Homeowners Association, representing that, and Ready Glenwood, which is our disaster preparedness, kind of fire prevention, Firewise Committee group. We have an active Firewise application in process and hope to get that, our community involved in that this year. We're working with Lakeloman Neighborhood on some of our combined issues around the Wui that adjoins our neighborhoods. And so, I don't want to have a lot of specific comments on the plan, which I think is excellent, but mainly to let you know that we're working in a concerted effort with other neighborhoods, Lakeloman, Peacock Gap, Bayside Acres, out in the eastern San Rafael Peninsula area, which is a high-risk area for fire. And so, we, we have a proposal, and it was written with the idea of outreach to the, our neighboring groups to work together in concert and get input from the fire, from Santa Fel City and the county fire experts as to how we can prioritize projects and do this in an informed manner, so that we're not just sort of repeating things that we might bring up individually, but, but work in a planned fashion. So, I'd like to get in the queue for these ongoing outreach meetings you've referred to. You know, I wasn't really aware of how to do that, but I'm stating an interest to get our groups involved.
You're reading my mind, because I was going to suggest that, let's make sure that you get on that, that list for the next time around. Like I said, this is, quite frankly, this is the first of a long series of steps to get where we want to be. So, you're not behind the eight ball, but rather you're, you're with us. So, that's a good thing.
Okay. So, who would like, who, who's the contact person?
City attorney. I mean, excuse me, city manager. Or the city attorney.
And if you just want to give a comment card to the city clerk right there, is a really fast way to do it as well.
Thanks.
And it sounds like you could provide some other interested parties. We'd welcome certainly.
Yeah, we're, we'd like to work in a, in a joint collaborative fashion.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Evening.
I'm going to follow up. I work with Roger.
I just want to interrupt. Give to Lindsay, if you would, your name or contact information. Thank, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Okay, I, I work with Roger. I'm also with Get Ready Glenwood. And I'm not going to repeat any of the comments that's said. I think they're all great. I like the report. The only thing I'd like to suggest is also, when you consider cameras, look at other technologies as well that you have. So, we're dealing with infrared, we can deal with other things like that. I know there is a litany of things, but the more that we have, that gives us more early warning, the better off we all are, because, you know, the fear of God is, how the hell do we evacuate? So, thanks.
Maybe I could ask the chief to describe the cameras. They're pretty incredible. I mean, you talked about it the other night. Maybe just comment, if you wouldn't mind.
The cameras that were recently replaced, the older ones were analog technology, the new ones are high-definition digital. Now, there's a lot of software that's actually behind some of these cameras, too, that differentiates between smoke and fog, will detect flame flicker, so, and their infrared have capability. So, it's, it's a quickly advancing technology, and so, part of the challenge is going to be, much like your own computer or phone, keeping up with that and having it as part of a, a larger network. This isn't just a network for Marin County, it's, it's actually attached to a much larger statewide network that is actually going to become a national network. One of the benefits to the cameras is, so to speak, we'll be able to drive them. So, in addition to having their observation capability of taking images wherever they're panning, every, every couple of minutes, you can actually go in and via the, the internet and actually move the camera in a certain direction, and that will enable dispatchers that are there 24/7 to be able to see an image. Let's say they may get a report about something, they may be able to do some verification via the camera, kind of assist them with that, with that process. So, we're, and we're definitely supportive of advancements in technology to help with this early warning and detection.
Yeah, good point. Thanks for bringing it up, but they really have advanced. Any, anyone else? Thanks for your input. Very helpful, and we'll go forward on this certainly. Wait, wait, wait a second. We're not quite done, folks. In any case, you've heard the public comments, input. I think you're going to see a lot of support. We are going to see a lot of support, certainly the department's going to see a lot of support from the community. I'm convinced of it. And much to do, but this is an excellent start, I would suggest. Any other comments, follow-up, or perhaps, what is the action on this item? Sorry.
Mayor, this is, accept the informational report, which is a different action than what we were thinking of, which is kind of approve the, the plan in its final form. So, I think this would just be accepting the information that you received tonight and directing staff to come back incorporating the comments.
Yeah, I, I made a few notes, so I've had a hard time finding where. So, in any case, is there a motion to accept the report?
No, I would not like to move to, um, accept the report. I would like to move to enthusiastically accept the report with, with commendations to our staff for the fantastic job that they've done, taking not just the first step, but the first 37 steps. So, that, that's a motion that we accept the report.
That's a motion, we probably won't have much trouble with it.
Second.
Second, move to second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Collin.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Mayor Phillips.
I, in that matter, carries 4-0, and I, I'm remiss. I should have mentioned that we have in our presence a very active member of our Fire Commission, Steve Mesrick, and I don't know how many years he's been the, the chair, I don't know, forever it seems, but thank you, thank you and your, your commissioners to, for helping us with this. Thank you, Steve. Moving on to council members' reports and future agenda items.
Oh. Do the successor agency first.
Again, there is.
What do I say?
Oh, maybe, no, next, next, next.
Do you have any reports? So, I attended the League of California Cities North Bay Meeting, and I know Mary Beth knew all about the subject matter because it was talking about MTC and the CASA Compact. So, that was fascinating. Also was able to attend the, what?
How was it received there?
The question was, how was it received? A lot of concern about having a one-size-fits-all, concern about the potential funding mechanisms. There was input given, not sure how far it landed, but it was, yeah, it was interesting. Anyway, so we were well represented there. There were lots, lots of elected officials that were there. And I, we had our quarterly C cap, and we changed the time from 7:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and it was an overflowing house. We had 50 people crammed into the upstairs conference room. We had students from MCL, the Marin School Environmental Leadership. We had all sorts of people that could make a 4 o'clock time and couldn't make 7:00, and we talked about the electrification of everything. And so, very well received, and of course, our C cap revised, off to a good start. So, looking forward to the next meeting that's at 4:00 PM in a couple months.
Okay. Mary Beth, then.
Thank you so much.
I just have a couple of quick things. I had the pleasure of getting together with Bill Carney, I talked about CAC, and we got some input from there. McGuire, had lunch with him. Sillie Subcommittee, Sillie Subcommittee, as you'll see, is coming along very well. Had a little SMART meeting the other day, that turned out kind of interesting, so moving forward on that. And a bunch of other stuff. And I do have a note, this is totally out of, out of order, but I do have a note to myself that to remind me to make sure that we deliver to Jim his evaluation this evening, which has been done. Obviously, it's, it's behind closed doors, but I will say that it's an excellent reflection of the work that you're doing, and thanks for doing so. Thank you. Success, anything else? Successor Agency, quarterly investment report.
I move that we accept the successor agency quarterly investment report.
Second.
Move to second. Roll call, please.
Member Bushy.
Hi.
Member Collin.
Hi.
Member Gamblin. Chairman Phillips.
I, in that matter, carries 4-0, and we are adjourned.